It is 5:01, folks. And I would like to call this meeting to order. This is February 4th, and this is our monthly school board meeting. I would like to ask everybody, if you would, please join me in a moment of silence, however you would so choose to do that. I would like to personally, for me, recognize some, the loss of some family members, of some of our alumni members here in the community, and just the loss, you know, throughout the state and the nation and the world right now. So if you'll please join me for a few seconds, thank you. Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you please call roll?
Madam Chair, Mr. Bryant.
Present.
Ms. Bryson Morrisberger.
Present.
Dr. Karab.
Present.
Ms. McKeever.
Here.
Ms. Perrier.
Present.
Ms. Torres.
Yes.
And Mr. Wade.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I'd like to call for approval of the agenda, please.
I so move, we approve the agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call?
Yes, Madam Chair, Mr. Bryant.
Yes.
Ms. Bryson Morrisberger.
Yes.
Dr. Karab.
Yes.
Ms. McKeever.
Yes.
Ms. Perrier.
Yes.
Ms. Torres.
Yes.
Mr. Wade.
Yes.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to open this up for comments from members of the community. I'd like to remind our community members, please to state your name and your address, and to limit your comments, please to three minutes. Mr. Como, we did have quite a few people sign up beforehand, so he will call your name and/or ask that you notify us through chat or raise your hand. And then again, as a reminder, you will be limited to three minutes for your comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am going to unmute and promote to panelists. The user is listed as Carol Bushing. And Carol, you should be joining us now, and you should be able to unmute. You can do video on or video off.
Hi, everyone. My name is Carol Bushing. I live at 1320 Riverdale Drive. Hello, school board and staff. I'm a parent in the division as well as a teacher. I would first like to thank you for your advocacy on behalf of the students and staff of CCS as you work to make decisions about safely reopening schools. While there are no easy answers, I truly appreciate your focus on science and safety. I come today to ask for more of that advocacy for the students of our division and state. Whether in person or virtual, the lives of the students of this state and the entire nation have been permanently altered due to the global pandemic. Yet, the VDOE has not altered its course in terms of the amount of material that students are expected to master by year's end. As a parent and a teacher, I have seen the impact that 11 months of stress and trauma can have on a child's ability to process, understand, and retain information. The pace of the normal curriculum doesn't work when the world is falling down around our ears. Stamina and the ability to focus, process, and retain information in large quantities with quick exposures are what is required in the current jam-packed curricular journey. Yet stamina, processing, and retention are the exact areas so affected by trauma and consistently high levels of anxiety. What a gift we would give our learners if they were able to instead focus on depth and breadth of concepts delivered with trauma-informed teaching strategies. And this is possible without adding days to the year, Mr. Northam. Each time the S O Ls are changed, moved, or split up, the VDOE crosswalks missing S O Ls into the former and latter years. This crosswalk ensures that by graduation, all of Virginia's children will have experienced the same conceptual and procedural work. This same strategy could be employed now if the VDOE was to decide to do this. Doing so would allow students this year to have fewer S O Ls to master, giving them the time they need to do their absolute best. Educators would then have the time we need to focus on each student's cognitive and perhaps more importantly, emotional needs. I hope VDOE, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Bushing. Mr. Como, next.
So I'm waiting for others at this time to please raise their hand. There were a number of people who were registered to speak for public comment, and here we have a couple more, so I'm going to just go from the top. The name on the next public comment is for Anne Marie Smith. Anne Marie, you should be able to unmute your microphone at this time.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Smith.
Okay, great, thank you so much. Good evening, my name is Anne Marie Smith. I live at 810 Federal Terrace, and I really appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak tonight. I'm the, I'm the mother of two high school students, a senior and a freshman. My three children have proudly participated in C H S or in the city schools since their elementary school days. Tonight, I would like to speak to you as a mother of my children and as a mother of our community's children, because at the end of the day, they are all our collective children, and we are responsible. By virtue, by virtue of age and experience, children often do not have a voice, so they need us to lift their voice, our voices responsibly. For much of the past year, the school board has been focused on the health crisis caused by COVID. Much of that response has been based on fear. Luckily, we have increasingly more data to help us move from a place of fear to a place of informed, safe action. We know, for instance, that children are not efficient spreaders of COVID, that mitigation efforts such as P P E and social distancing work, and I could go on and on, but you all each have access to the same data. We also now know just how bad it is for our children to be out of school. Virtual learning is no substitute for the in-person experience. The data shows that our children's mental health is suffering. Teenage suicide is way up, for example, and very sadly, including locally. We also know that kids learn little through the virtual format. Kids who were behind before are much further behind, and they may never catch up. A senior at C H S that might have gone to college had they been around a caring adult will never go to college because they weren't around that caring adult. The decisions made by the school board about how to educate our children during the pandemic will color the rest of their lives. Please make decisions with this gravity in mind. Please keep this in mind as you consider whether, whether or not to bring back kindergarten through second grade students in March. Please keep this in mind when you decide who to bring back and when to bring them back. Please have a plan and the ready so we can get all our children back in school as soon as safely possible. Their lives will be affected by such decisions. Our children are counting on us. I would add that I celebrated that C H S or the city schools prioritize the safety of teachers, rightly so, they're a precious commodity, a precious gift to our community, and that I'm so glad that everyone has had the opportunity to get vaccinated the first time and will soon have an opportunity to get the second vaccine. But I would also note that there are fellow teachers who have been in private schools in person since the fall who have not had that same opportunity.
Ms. Smith.
And professors like my husband who are in life and not. And so let's please, you know, use that wisely. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the list, we have, the listener is Jen, the last name is M A E N G. Should be able to unmute at this time.
Hi. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Jen Meng, and I live at 614 Rainier Road. I'm the parent of two Johnson Elementary students. So my comments tonight relate to the proposed 2021-22 calendar, and I have three main concerns about the proposed schedule that I'd like to share with the board and that I also shared through the Google form, which I appreciate the opportunity to use. First, I would consider, urge the board to consider beginning school for students a week or two earlier than is concurrently proposed at the start date of August 25th. Prior to the 2020 shift to post Labor Day, the school year was slated to begin on August 19th, I believe. And I believe the start dates for the last five years were the 19th, 17th, 23rd, and 22nd and 21st, respectively. Um, beginning a week or two earlier would provide us a better opportunity as a school community to support students who've had, as our previous speakers mentioned, an unprecedented school year, potentially reduce the quote "summer slide," which is likely to be exacerbated this year, and provide more opportunities to use outside spaces in our schools and our school communities while the weather is still nice. This would also allow for the potential of a buffer if schools need to accommodate closing or virtual instruction over the winter for a period of time, as we know that our youngest learners won't likely be vaccinated by then. Second, there doesn't seem to be a rationale for not having school on January 3rd, 2022, and I would be interested in the justification for this quote "no school for students' day" or anyone. Finally, I would urge the board to look at the fact that there are currently three 40 weeks scheduled for January, right after the two-week winter break. Removing January 3rd, as I previously mentioned, moving the end of semester teacher workday to align with Martin Luther King Day reduces the burden on working parents having to find care of three days in the same month right after the two-week winter break to two days over one four-day weekend, potentially. Shifting the start date of the school year earlier would accommodate this, as would potentially some creative thinking about the end of the semester and when that teacher workday falls relative to the true end of semester. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next on our list, we have Deborah Hellman, who can unmute at this time.
I think I've unmuted, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, my name is Deborah Hellman, I live at 1401 Rugby Road. I have one daughter currently at C H S now and another daughter who graduated last year. And I also want to speak about the issue of getting our kids back to school in person as soon as possible. Or, I think, I concur in everything that Anne Marie Smith said, so I won't repeat the parts that she said, but I do think, you know, the CDC is letting us know that in-person education is safe with masking and social distancing. And I do appreciate the reality that teachers may be worried and parents may be worried that compliance can be difficult and those measures have to be complied with, but if the teachers are also vaccinated, it seems that it should be safe once that has occurred. I'd also add that teachers in Virginia are prioritized for vaccination ahead of high-risk individuals, and there are a lot of high-risk individuals that are waiting for a vaccine so that our teachers can, and I support that, I think that teachers should be first because the, the health and development of our young kids is so crucial, but it's, I think, almost ethically inappropriate to waste that benefit and not take advantage of the fact that our teachers have been prioritized by keeping the teachers not with the students in school. I, I think that's not fair to those who are asked to wait, who have high-risk medical conditions, if we don't have our teachers back in school, providing that necessary education to kids. I'll just say that I'm not insensitive to the risk that, that teachers may feel and the fear that they may have. I myself am a teacher, I teach at the university, and I am teaching in person to 70 students. Now, I recognize that university students are more mature and more compliant than, than kids are, but I'm not being, I'm not, I'm not speaking from no understanding about how someone might feel in such a situation, and I am teaching in person to those students. I think it's, if you've taught online and you've taught in person, you cannot miss the difference of what that experience is. It's dramatic, it's critical. Equity is a huge issue for our school system. I think it's even more dramatic and critical for our students who are at risk. There's a lot of evidence that we're exacerbating the achievement gap among more privileged and less privileged students during this time of online education, and I think it's imperative that we get the kids back as soon as possible. I also want to flag the fact that we should not be naive about what the fall is going to be like. And so if you think, oh, we're just going to get through this year, and then everybody's going to be back and it's going to be all normal in the fall, I don't think that's a realistic expectation. And so we have to be planning, time's up, we have to be planning now for the fall. Thanks so much for letting me speak.
Thank you.
I'm next on the list, we have, the user is listed as Annie S U T T L E. Should be able to unmute at this time.
Hi, yes, my name is Annie Subtle. I am at 708 Park Street, and I have two children at Burnley Moran Elementary. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Charlottesville City Schools Joint PTO Reopening Fund to provide you and the community with a short update on its, on its progress to date. A reminder that the Joint PTO Reopening Fund was created to support effective teaching in a virtual environment and allows equal opportunity for each student and teacher to productively utilize the district's mandatory nine-week virtual learning plan. The reopening fund has received a total of $163,718.41 from 187 donors, an increase of nearly $2,620 since our last report. $159,000 from the fund was distributed to the CCS schools, which have created dedicated committees to select expenditures. These committees have been spending the resources to support students' virtual learning needs and in some cases, meeting families' essential needs. Some examples of how the funding have been spent recently include, on December 17th and 18th, Charlottesville, of last year, Charlottesville High School held a C H S cares holiday drive-through event. Through generous support from the Joint PTO Reopening Fund, 200 C H S families in need were invited to drop by school to pick up a bag stocked with nutritious, shelf-stable grocery items for the winter break. Each bag included a Kroger or Food Lion gift grocery card to enable families to purchase fresh items like milk, eggs, and fruits and vegetables. 16 volunteers from the C H S PTO spent nearly a full day working with C H S teachers and staff to pack up these grocery bags for distribution. And the Joint PTO Reopening Fund was used by Greenbrier Elementary School to help cover the remaining transportation costs for children attending International Neighbor's Learning Centers, which are two or three miles from their homes. International Neighbor serves 30 newly arrived school-aged children who lack the skills and tools necessary for online learning without significant support. Many school committees shifted planning and purchases recently to support an in-person return. Those purchases are no regrets in that the materials or services can still be utilized in a post-COVID school year, if not utilized the school year. From the beginning, this committee has been committed to the transparency of this effort. We encourage everyone to visit ccsptofund.org to find out how funds are being spent and distributed. We wish you a constructive meeting, and thank you for your time.
Ms. Subtle, thank you so much for that update, and I did see your email, and I apologize, it was one that came in late this afternoon, so I owe you a response.
No, no worries, thank you.
Thank you.
The next user is on the screen, last name is S Y E D, should be able to unmute at this time.
Hello, can, can, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hi, everyone, my name is Anna Sayed, I'm a pediatrician at UVA. I have worked now at UVA for the past four years, and prior to this, moved from Boston, with prior training at Harvard, Embry and Duke. I just wanted to thank the committee for the opportunity to speak to, to you all. There were three things I wanted to speak about. One, I think that teacher safety is paramount. Two, there were things that I've seen on the parent/teacher portals online about vaccines that I just wanted to make sure I address with my pediatric and scientific background. And the third being of child mental health. So teacher safety, I just wanted to say that as a pediatrician, I completely agree that teacher safety has to be paramount. I think, given that the vaccine is now out there, all teachers under whichever phase they are, should be given the option of getting the vaccine. And as such, the, the option of coming back to school in person should be only after all teachers have been offered this. So coming to the vaccine, I know what I've read and I've heard concerns from, from teachers and parents alike is about the 95%, the 95% efficacy of the vaccine. I just want to clarify a few things. All vaccines, none of them are 100% effective. So when we say a vaccine is 95% effective, you, you can compare it to other vaccines like measles, varicella, flu, and so, when the CDC says that you will get safety and, and decrease endemic rates of COVID with a 95% effective vaccine, they're taking into account the fact that, that that 5% part is there. So I just want to make the point that 95% vaccine efficacy is very, very good. The last part I wanted to bring about is just child mental health, so thinking about cost versus benefits. So we've talked, we've heard about child equity, the equity of education, and again, as a pediatrician, we're seeing this a lot in our clinics. There is an undeniable burden of mental health, especially in the younger children, whose education is more about in-person interaction than actual teaching. And they are being severely impacted, just in our clinics, we have seen more and more children show up with anxiety, depression, as young as ages of five and six, which is, which is a, which is something that we need to be aware of and balance in this. And I also want to highlight that I agree, we don't know where the total infection rates, et cetera, will go in terms of the community at large, but in general, with UVA opening, with the health system being open, we know that wearing a mask, social distancing, et cetera, the, the environment can be safe to come back in. So if, if the concern is that despite the vaccine, despite measures in place, we won't be 100% safe, then I would say that's where we have to think of the risk-benefit ratio, because in theory, every time you get in the car, it's not safe to, it's, you know, you don't have 100% safety of being, sorry, trying to wrap up, yes, I think you get what I mean.
Thank you, Dr. Sayed, we appreciate your comment.
At this time, there are no other hands raised. I will give anyone on the phone, they can press star nine on their phone if they do want to raise their hand, and I'm all, now I'm seeing another hand. First name is John, last name is W E L L S, should be able to unmute at this time.
Good evening, everyone, thanks for having me, John Wells, 1122 East Jefferson Street, and just want to say thank you to all of you for the work that you've put in in attempting to get kids back to school. Based on the email that went around from the division this afternoon, it looks like pre-K to second will get voted in face-to-face tonight. I hope that's the case. I appreciate the comments from Mrs. Smith Hellman and Sayed. I agree with, with those, with those thoughts. I want to address something a little more narrow on, on the call tonight, and that is the decision to leave out third and fourth grade for bringing the elementary school kids back, back in person. I don't know if it's been addressed specifically or explained in detail, but to me, you know, if this, if this group is about equity and inclusion, I, I simply don't understand the decision not to bring back third and fourth grade also. And imagine the family that has three kids that right now they're sitting at the Y, and, and one kid is a third and fourth grader, and there's a single guardian bringing all those kids up. What, you know, what is the decision-making process here if they have a job, you know, a 10-hour job, whatever they're doing, they, they have to decide between splitting the kids up or, or just make, doing the easy thing and leaving them at the Y? And I think everybody on this panel, on this board and in the division agrees that it's best to get the kids back to school. I just don't understand how that decision is promoting equity and inclusion, knowing that the best thing to do for these kids is getting them in, back into school. So if you could address that at some point specifically, I would appreciate it. It sounds as though, you know, we're stuck on, on numbers and specific distances for social distancing and, and all that sort of thing, but with 35% less kids in, in the building, at least, you know, planned based on the last survey, I'm not sure I understand either how social distancing parameters are, are going to come into play here. So if equity and inclusion is indeed, you know, what we are trying to address as a community, I would, I would ask that, that the board working with the division reconsideres the, the group that's to be brought back on, on the eighth and includes third to fourth grade with the rest of elementary students. Thank you for your time and all the work that you've put in.
Thank you, Mr. Wells.
At this time, we have Emily, last name W O N G, who should be able to unmute at this time.
Hi, yes, are you able to hear me? Hi, my name is Emily Wong, thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. I'm a pediatrician at the University of Virginia, caring for many of the children in the city of Charlottesville, and I'm also the mother of two city schoolchildren. As a pediatrician, I support the reopening of the Charlottesville City Schools. This is consistent with the recommendations of the American Academy of Pediatrics and the Centers for Disease Control to have children physically present in schools. We have seen nationally and locally that schools are places with a low risk of transmission if appropriate mitigation strategies are implemented. Since July, I have been meeting weekly with other pediatricians in the community, the Blue Ridge Health Department, and all the private and public schools in the area. Every week, we review the current local data on COVID in our community. We discuss symptoms, testing, mitigation strategies, and policies to ensure that we are all working cooperatively, supporting the schools to remain open, and reducing the risk of COVID transmission. The schools have acted quickly to contain spread and lower risk, and the pediatricians are all committed to evaluating children as needed. In weighing the choices about school opening, we must also consider the consequences of sustained closure. I've been seeing children in the office throughout this pandemic, and in my 17 years of practice in Charlottesville, I have never seen such a severe mental health crisis as we are seeing now. The extent and severity of depression, anxiety, anorexia, and suicidality are significant. Every day, I am seeing children as young as five or six who are suffering, and I've seen young children left at home unattended and children without enough food at home. We will see the developmental and academic effects in years to come. Recently, I saw COVID vaccination of city school staff going on at C H S, and I was really pleased because the teachers and school staff should be a priority. Their work is essential. Now is the time for Charlottesville City to make Charlottesville children a priority, and their in-person education should be an essential service. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wong.
I do not see any other hands raised or messages in chat. Oh, we do have another hand raised. First name is listed as Jennifer, the last name is G R O V E R, should be able to unmute at this time. Jennifer, if you're there, you, see if you can unmute.
Did that work?
Yes.
There you go, yes.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Grover, I live at 609 Malcolm Crescent, I have two students at Burnley Moran Elementary. I've been in contact before, I'm sure some of you recognize my name, and I appreciate the replies that I've received from you. I would just like to address tonight, as other parents and representatives of our community have discussed, the issue of getting students back to school as soon as possible, including the entire elementary staff. I am one of the, sorry, the entire elementary student body. My family is one of those families that would be My family is one of those families that would be split with some being allowed to return on March eighth and some not. And it is the upper grade that is struggling. So when I read the email today that said that struggling students would, under certain circumstances, be allowed to return, I chatted with my principal about whether or not that would apply to my child. And the short answer is that, under the current sort of guidelines, it doesn't apply to my child. But nonetheless, she and many of her friends are really struggling, and as the last pediatrician said, what I'm seeing in my household is is an academic situation. What a dear friend of mine is seeing is a severe emotional and social situation. I feel that it's imperative that all of the elementary students get back as soon as possible, especially given the very recent Journal of the American Medical Association indicating that children under ten are simply not the same risk as older children, as adults. So I wanted to reiterate again what many parents and pediatricians have been saying tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I am looking to see if there are any other hands that are raised or any other chat messages. Right now, I don't see any. Madam Chair, oh, I do have a hand raised. First name is listed as Angel, and last name is F E E R O. Should be able to unmute at this time.
Hey, this is actually Richard Fero using the computer with my wife, eight twenty-five prospect. Anyways, I just, just excited to hear the community coming out and expressing their desire to have kids back in person. So I just want to thank everybody who's come on to do that. And I also just want to give a shout out to Dr. Beth Baptist and all that she's done to help make sure the communities gets, working with students gets vaccinated. So, that's all. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Fero.
Okay, I'll start my my rant again. I'm looking in the attendees list. No hands raised at this time. And no chat messages indicating speaking. I'll turn it back to you, Madam Chair, for a time waiting before we move on.
Thank you, and a reminder to everybody that there is another opportunity towards the end of our meeting for public comment. And we are always open to emails and and other ways for you to, you know, reach out to us to share your concerns or comments or ideas. We'll give it just a couple more seconds, and then we actually are going to roll into an opportunity for public comment specific to our twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget. So anybody, Mr. Como?
We are still zero hands raised and.
Okay, then then specifically, I will, this now, I will open this up for public comment specific to our twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget, please.
Okay, I do have one hand raised right now. Beth, last name I K E, should be able to unmute at this time.
Thank you. My name is Beth Ike. I live at eight oh two St. Clair Avenue. I asked this question in the joint city council, school board budget meeting, and I haven't seen anything to clarify. I'm curious about the raise for administrative staff and who that encompasses. I would encourage those staff receiving perhaps higher than two hundred thousand dollars a year to either forego that raise on their own. I just feel like through the lens of equity, the idea of giving raises to some of our highest paid and then very well-paid administrative staff feels icky to me, to say the least. Thank you so much for your time and all of your work. I appreciate it.
Thank you for your repeated message.
All right. I will tell you that I see no chats or hands raised for public comment on the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. And I will again defer back to you for a time of waiting before moving on.
Okay, we'll wait a few more seconds. If Ms. McKeever would do us a favor and serenade, please.
That would be a very poor choice.
All right. Few more seconds here, and then I believe we will move on. One more, one more view there, Mr. Como, anybody?
Sure, there's no one, no one with a hand raised, no chats at this time.
All right, then I will close public comment around the budget, and we will move on to student and staff recognitions, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, and Dr. Atkins. It is my pleasure to show appreciation to groups within the Charlottesville City Schools. Tonight, we are recognizing four different groups as we celebrate Principal's Week, School Counselors' Week, School Board Members' Month, as well as School Board Clerk, excuse me, School Board Clerk and Deputy Clerk Week. Starting with school principals, their week was January twenty-fourth through the thirtieth. As a small token of our appreciation, we did treat them with lunch last Friday just to just to show them we could not do the important work of educating our students without them. Our principals are Dr. Elizabeth Corab at Burnley Moran, Mr. Kenneth Leatherwood at Clark, Ms. Dana Freaky at Greenbrier, Dr. Justin Malone at Jackson Villa, Ms. Summerlin Thompson at Johnson, Dr. Erin Kirchner at Venable, Dr. Adam Hastings at Walker, Dr. Jesse Turner at Buford, Dr. Eric Irazieri at Charlottesville High, and Ms. Jill Doll at Lugo McGinnis Academy. So we do again thank all of our principals for everything that they do for us. Next, we have our school counselors. This week, February first to February fifth is National School Counselors' Week, and we and publicly, we would like to thank them for their work. They complete many services for students and our teachers, parents, and administrators. And our school counselors are Rebecca Baber at Burnley Moran, Najwa Taffey at Clark, Catherine Sublett at Greenbrier, Kristen Ulrich, Jackson Villa, Allison Pillow at Johnson, Malika Redden, at Redden, excuse me, at Venable, Elizabeth Dinwiddie and John Crowstain at Walker, Joshua Epps and William Ulrich at Buford, Emily Patruski at Lugo McGinnis Academy. And we have at Charlottesville High School, Department Chair Shamika Terrell, Nikki Eubanks, David Wilkerson, Brianna Heel, Melanie Key, and Hannah Doughty. So we again just want to thank all of our school counselors for all the work that they do on our behalf. Now, we would like to celebrate our school board members. As the month of February is School Board Member Appreciation Month, our board, you all deserve a month and more of daily thankies for all the work you do on behalf of our students, staff, families, and the community. So at this time, we will pause just to tell you thank you to all of you for your hard work and doing what is needed on behalf of our students and staff. Then now, last, but certainly not least, the Virginia School Board Association has designated the third week in February as School Board Clerk Appreciation Week. So at this time, we honor our school board clerk, Ms. Julia Green, as well as our deputy clerk. There you are, Leslie, I had to find you on the on the on the grid, Leslie Thacker. The two of you are responsible for keeping accurate records of the meetings and proceedings of our local school board, a record of all receipts as well as dis- dispersments, and a record of all official acts, and that's just a small few of what's on your list. So thank you very much for your dedication to our school division, and we appreciate you both greatly. And those are all the appreciations I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. King, very much. And yes, I agree. Gratitude and and so much appreciation for every single one of those people that you mentioned and more. So thank you. I would now like to move on and ask that we consider adoption of the consent agenda, please.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the consent agenda.
A second.
Any questions or discussion from anybody? And I'm not seeing everybody, so speak up if you do, and if not, Madam Clerk, if you will, call for a vote, please.
It's Madam Chair. Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Ms. Bryson Morseburger?
Yes.
Dr. Grab?
Yes.
Ms. McKeever?
Yes.
Ms. Poirier?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
And Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I need to make sure I'm looking at the right agenda, because I have an old one in front of me here. All right, our next item is an action item. And I would like to address the board and ask that, without objection, I'd like for us to verbally affirm the plan to return to in-person instruction on March eighth, following option A. So if there is objection, if you would please speak up, so I can.
Madam Chair, I I object to option A. I I feel like I want to affirm the return to learn, but I want to more broadly bring children back, and I feel like option A is clearly too limiting, as one of our principals has already told a parent how limiting it is. So I want to ensure that there's utmost flexibility for our division to get as many students back as possible, and I feel like option A may be too limiting.
Okay, so objection noted. I will open this up for discussion at this point. So Ms. McKeever, if you'd like to start first, and then if there's anybody else, please, who would like to speak up, we will receive that as well.
Okay, so I obviously have been pretty firm in my support for keeping schools remote for the past ten months, so I feel very odd in the this position. But having seen many teachers and staff members able to receive their first shot, and certainly before school starts, getting, being able to get their second shot, I am exceptionally optimistic about students returning to school. Sooner, you know, March eighth being, I think, a great place to start. I cannot tell you how you can, most, I mean, all parents know how challenging this has been, and this is not like. I I just, I I can, I feel like I have seen in the past three months, more so in the first, than the first seven months, just how difficult it has been for the kids in my own household, because I just want everybody to know I do have four children of my own in public school this year, two at elementary school and two in high school. This has been a very personal journey and one that I I don't, you know, all of us have suffered. And so, the teachers, the staff, our our community has suffered, and it, let's just go back to, you know, start where we we, how we started, was just a failure of our federal government to recognize that there was a problem. And now that I, that I, we have a government that actually acknowledges there is a problem and is is seeking to get as many people vaccinated as possible and require masks, and all of the things that we know has helped our community be protected from this virus. I'm, I just feel like I've turned a page because of those things. I feel like there is data on both sides and have been for the past ten months, and you can pretty much point to any study to say the opposite of what you are saying at any given moment. So the vaccine really is the game changer here. I would like to see every student pre-K through twelve have the opportunity to return to school in some form. It doesn't have to be dramatic. I am, and I would like, you know, if it's staggered starting March eighth, that's what I would like to see. I don't want to see the pressure on students to ramp up at that point, though. One of my kids, she said, I don't want to go back to school if it means I have to do more work. And that just reminded me how traumatized our community is. Because she's already scared of the pressure of high school, and I just don't want that. I want, the kids need to have an opportunity to transition back in an in an approach that is mindful of their mental health needs, their social, emotional, and academic needs last. I mean, I don't care if you're a senior in a high school or a preschooler. The most important thing is to transition back in a way that supports the mental health of our community. This, all of the decisions that have been made have been, have affected everybody. And the, in in our world, this is not like, this is a thing that is, anyway, so I I just want to move on. Our students are traumatized, and I do not want to be, to exacerbate that trauma by demanding more from them once they do return to school. I also don't want to see the school year extended. I I don't, we don't have the budget for that, first of all. That's like the least of the problem, but that is, at this point, I'm happy to look at the calendar for next year, but I don't, I see this period as an opportunity to transition back to see your friends to kind of regularly, weekly. I also did agree with many of the parents. The pre-K through two option, I thought was very good when there were other, very few other choices, so that we could get pre-K through two kids reading. Right now, I would like the pre-K through two and the three, four separation doesn't make any sense to me. And I, and like I have mentioned, I think it's kind of the worst-case scenario for families. Because, for example, I'm just going to point to myself. I think I've mentioned my mom is my childcare provider, and she can't be around children who are going to be going to school. So I no longer than have a childcare provider three days a week because she can't be around my other child who's now able to go to school. So it's, it really creates, I think, more problems than it solves. So if we can get more kids back sooner, I would like to see a plan for that. It doesn't need to happen, the plan doesn't need to happen today. I want to see the, you know, plans that the educators make. But I really strongly support much of what the parents are saying here, and I definitely acknowledge the mental health toll that this has taken on our whole community. Let's just be frank, all the community is suffering as a result of this. But that we, so, supporting the social and emotional being of our students and our staff to slowly return back to school, I would like to see that a much broader base of all of the students be able to return who want to return to school. Thank you.
And Camus McKeever. Let me scan through my screens here.
I'd like to.
Yes, Ms. Ms. Lashandra Bryson Morseburger, you're up.
I just want to voice an objection to the October eighth return.
March.
I'm sorry, what did I say? It doesn't matter. I'm sorry, it's COVID, it's the fatigue. The March eighth return, because although teachers are in the priority group and they're starting to get vaccinated, they have not received their second shot. They can't, all through February is booked up. So it's into March to even get the second shot. And I believe the shot we're receiving is the Moderna, and it's ninety-five percent effective after the second shot, two weeks after the second shot. And so until teachers have the opportunity, the staff has the opportunity to be fully vaccinated, I am going to object to starting before that date. I would like to give them the opportunity to at least get the full vaccine. And also, there's been a lot of talk about equity, and equity is important, you know, to the board, it's important to me. And so it's important to note that, you know, kids, there's no vaccine for children, and everyone, the long-term effects and how it affects children, it's it's still a developing story. We don't know what we, the things we will know in six months that we don't know today. it will, it will be a total game changer, I'm sure. It just changes daily. But, you know, as far as equity, if kids can still spread it, people who are fully vaccinated can still spread it. For equity, a lot of our students who we want to be fair to live in multi-generational homes. They live in communities where the spread your life is vastly different if you live in an apartment versus if you live in a house, a single-family dwelling. So, you know, equity is important for our students, is important to the people in our community that could be exposed. And so I think that when we're talking about equity, we should really follow all of the different implications. And I love our public schools, and I think that it is unfair to compare us continually to private schools. Just speaking in terms of equity itself, if you're comparing us to a private school, you have the option of going to private school, then you're leaps and bounds were above where most of us are starting from. So it is not an apples-to-apples comparison. So I just wanted to speak on, you know, equity comes up a lot. And equity, the achievement gap, those things, we want to face them and fix them, but we are living in a pandemic. And you know, equity, equity was an issue before the pandemic, when kids were in the building. So I hope that when we're comparing public schools to private schools and talking about what is equitable and what is inequitable, that we appreciate the fact that there are applications for equity that go, you know, way beyond this discussion, and that, that we're thinking about it in long terms and not just right now in this moment. Because I hear from a variety of people who come from less equitable conditions, who are not, you know, the first people to say, "I want my children back in school." So I just wanted to add some, you know, other perspective to say that it's not a one-and-done with equity because everyone's back in the building. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wade?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to start off by saying that I am prepared to support option A. And I just think that it's time for us to start the process of bringing the students back in the building. I think that this is a great first step. And I think that down the road, you know, if things are going well, Dr. Atkins, if you can, you know, let us know, and maybe we can, you know, bring in more or relook at the, what we're doing. But I think that this proposal starts the process and, and it's not, you know, I think it's the best that we can do at this time, but we're starting the process. And it, it, you know, when we looked at this proposal, we got input from the principals on how this would work and how, you know, they felt that based on what the spacing, that this would be the best option. So, and I understand what my other two colleagues were saying, and, and excellent point, point, but I just don't think that we can delay this, study it anymore, come back with any proposals. We have to continue to support what we approved at our last meeting, so I'm prepared to support option A. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wade. Ms. Purrier? Would you like, do you have anything to? No? Okay. Mr. Bryant? I'm looking for you.
I'm here. I am, you know, I heard both Lashandra and Jennifer, but I am in support of option A. I think we need to move forward. And if, any given time that we can bring in additional students, so Dr. Atkins will call the board together, but I think we just need to move forward and get those students back in school under the option A option at this point. So I am in support of Dr. Atkins' recommendation.
Dr. Craft?
Yeah. Yes, I, I am in support of sticking to our March 8th date as the starting point to bring students back. I believe that we are ready for this. I feel really good about the work that we have done to prepare our buildings. I feel like we have supported and protected our staff, and I do believe that, you know, the vaccination process will, will fit pretty well with that timetable. And I'm sure Dr. Baptist, you'll be able to fill us in a little bit more. I haven't been able to get my second one scheduled yet either. But I feel confident in that, and I, and I also feel like we now have enough data nationally to show that schools are, you know, in the pandemic, a relatively safe place for our children to be and for our staff to be. So I feel better about that than I have in any of our previous meetings. I would like to see option A as a starting point. I do want to see what we can do to push forward to bring more students back into our buildings. I am very, very concerned about the mental health issues. You know, I hear about it a lot, and I think that the trauma, the anxiety, the depression, I think those, you know, it's, it's hard to get over that, and I think it affects our kids' development very deeply. And I think we just have to get them in the building so that we can actually see them and work with them in order to begin to, to heal. So, you know, I would like to see what we can do to bring back our third and fourth graders to a clear plan that brings them back quickly. And, and, you know, for all of our other kids, I think there are, there are some kids who definitely are more academically at risk than others, but I do believe all of our kids are suffering. So I'd like to find ways of bringing all of them back in some way, shape, or form. But I feel really good about sticking with the March 8th date, and I support that.
Thank you. Dr. Atkins, would you like to make a comment at all about this before I call the question?
Stories, yes, I would. Thank you. I appreciate all of those comments. One area of hope is the vaccine and the number of our staff members that we have been able to get through to get the first shot. Ms. Powell is on. Ms. Powell, would you give us an update on the probability of our staff getting that second shot?
Certainly, Dr. Atkins. I'm very happy to report, and staff will receive more information about this via email in the next day or so. But Dr. Baptist and I were part of a call this afternoon with the Department of Health and our colleagues in Albemarle County. And we are, we have received very clear reassurance that folks who got their first shot through the tent at Kmart, there's a process and a procedure that will be happening via email where, where people will be offered their appointment slots to go back to that same location to get your second shot. And we will be having a second clinic at the Charlottesville High School, Martin Luther King Performing Arts Center. Again, for everyone who got, every person who's in the system that got the first shot will be offered the second shot on time, which would mean February 26th and 27th. And VDH said we could send that email out right now if we wanted to, but we are coordinating with Albemarle County, and this is not just a Charlottesville thing, but we got a very strong reassurance today. And we, there was an email early in the day from VDH regarding the Kmart site, and then we had the meeting this afternoon, late this afternoon, regarding our clinic. So we are committed to working with Albemarle to get that communication out to all of our educators in a coordinated fashion.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. I will say that bringing our students back March 8th is a starting point, and it starts the process of getting our students back in the building. So I appreciate the discussion and appreciate us moving towards the March 8th date.
Can I ask, Dr. Atkins, I was concerned by what I heard from one of the BME parents around the principal feeling like her child wouldn't qualify because, you know, whatever the guidelines are. And I just really don't want the school board guidelines under option A to be a limiting factor. Option A has never really been something that we have approved, like there has been, I don't recall us approving that specific option A, maybe, maybe because I voted, I don't know. March 8th seems like a good timeline, but I wonder if we can give a little bit more broader discretion to the division about who gets to come back on March 8th, so that we're not basically approving a K-12, I'm sorry, K-2 return, but then next week deciding, okay, more kids can come back. Like, I think we need to give a little bit more clarity than just like, okay, option A is the only thing that's going to happen between now and March 8th.
Ms. McKeever, I'm not sure if your question?
My question is, are we going to be accepting more students? I, okay, my question is, if we approve option A tonight, is that going to limit who can come back?
Well, option A does define the students who will come back. It's pre-K through 2 students and other students who need, who are struggling right now, whether that be academically or emotionally. And the principals and the teachers are working on that list of the students who will come back in the other grade levels.
Okay, so then, is there a possibility between now and March 8th that that group of students who would be invited, who are not K through 2, would be broadened?
Ms. McKeever, I think I can give you more information. Let me meet with principals and we finish with our planning. Right now, the option A would bring back our pre-K through 2 students, and then the other students that principals and teachers together select that are in need, our most needy students. We've looked at our students who are in special education and their IEP team determines that they need to come back. We looked at our L students. We looked at several categories of students, our students who have academic challenges. So there are many categories of students that we have looked at to bring back into the building.
But you already have that, you already have that ability to bring those students back under our return-to-learn plan that we've previously approved of.
Ms. McKeever, I believe those were smaller groups, and I do believe, and somebody, maybe Madam Clerk or somebody, correct me if I'm wrong, but our last vote in January was or included Plan A with a March 8th date. So I believe.
Okay, I voted against, yeah, I remember.
That was the vote that was taken.
I, all I'm saying is, for people who do not have elementary-age kids in school, every third and fourth grader is suffering and needs additional social, emotional support by the school division. And so I do not want to tie the hands of our principals or you, Dr. Atkins, in getting as many students back as possible, and that's what I feel like option A does.
So, so, Madam, Madam Chair, may I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
So I think that if we could modify the motion or, you know, make a new motion to say that, you know, we will have option A, but give the teachers or, and/or the superintendent, the principals and/or the superintendent the flexibility that if option A, if it's rolling out smoothly and they feel that they can safely maybe bring in the third and fourth grade students, then they can do that without coming back to the board, because I think it's the intention of every board member to bring back as many students as quickly and safely as they can. If we, let's say, go through first three, four weeks in March, and they felt like they can bring back more students, then they don't have to come back and ask for permission. I think that if they can do that quickly and efficiently and safely, there's no need to come back to us. And maybe the current motion doesn't allow for that. If it doesn't, then I think that we should, you know, give them that flexibility. Does that make sense, Madam Chair and Dr. Atkins?
Yeah, we can certainly do that, because as we've said, this starts the process. March 8th will start the process of turning our students to school. And we would work towards bringing more students back in. So if the board wants to offer that flexibility, it certainly will allow us to work in between board meetings to make that happen.
But that was your intention anyway, was it not, Dr. Atkins and administrators? That March 8th is the starting point? And as we work through it, the following week or the week after that, you would potentially have more students, and you wouldn't have to come back. The option A for March 8th is to allow the schools to open with the groups that have been identified and then move forward from there.
Ms. Purrier, that will work very well. Thank you.
Ms. McKeever?
So I would just like to see actual plans in the next month about, again, my concern is, we say today we are great with option A, and then, but we'll, and we're going to broaden it, and people are going to come back. And that's great, you know, but I need, as a parent, to plan. And as a, as a teacher, you need to plan. And as a teacher who's probably also a parent, you need to plan. And so if we don't do anything else but option A and this kind of vague notion that other kids, as defined by the division, that's going to be hard to plan around. If we decide in two weeks, okay, we're going to actually include other, you know, third and fourth grade now. Okay, great, we can plan for that. But if in a month we decide in two weeks, you can, you know, I mean, it's, we, we need to plan.
Yeah, I understand. So, Madam Chair, and I understand the parents need that, you know, that notice. And let's say that we start off with option A, and we find later that we can safely bring in other students, that we won't make that change until or unless we give the parents or the public at least, you know, let's say, two weeks' notice that that change is going to take place, that we're going to, you know, will take place. So that it's not like, okay, starting Monday, now the third and fourth grade students are coming. We'll get, give them adequate notice, but we have to start somewhere. And I understand that the concern of giving notice, and we should give notice, but I think that we want to give them the flexibility and the parents the notice to do that. That's an excellent point, Jennifer.
Ms. Ms. Morseburger, did you have another comment you wanted to make? You'd reached out to me.
Yes, I just wanted to ask about when we come back, the plans, because I know we have our, the CARES Act money, we have all of, you know, that to help us get the extra supplies we need. And I just want to know that we're, confirm that we're guaranteeing mask sanitizers and the, all the proper PPE for our teachers and staff who are returning to the building. And I'm also wondering what type of training will be available to teachers before March 8th? So that, you know, they know the procedures, the protocols, when they're back in the buildings, just a training. Because, you know, it's a, it's a different, it'll be a different face-to-face. And so, you know, we're talking about the CDC and their recommendation that their, their guidance that I find conflicting to say that we're, the vaccine is very important, but we can also bring teachers back without it, as long as we do everything perfect. So since we're not going to, at this point, there's no guarantee that teachers will be fully vaccinated. I would just like to know, you know, as far as spacing, as far as PPE, because, you know, we live in a society where teachers oftentimes pay for their own supplies. I just want to know that, like, our guarantee is that we provide PPE and sanitizer and all that, that teachers will need and that students will need. And I also want to know what training will be in place for teachers before they come back into the building face-to-face.
Ms. Morseburger, Bryson Morseburger, we did talk about giving teachers at least a week to prepare to come back in the building, and during that time, they'll be working with their principal to review the protocol to make sure that everyone's familiar with that protocol during that time. As you recall, at our January board meeting, we made sure that we gave each of our schools and each individual school the flexibility to assign that time for practice, for preparing classrooms that works best in their building. So each, each school will have a different schedule to prepare for the students coming back in the building. As far as mitigation is concerned. Um, as far as mitigation is concerned, um, we have, have equipped down our buildings with the. Uh, all of the CDC recommendations for mitigation and we have gone far beyond that mitigation. We have supplies that we have all, uh, ordered in advance that's available to all of our schools. We have well-equipped all of our schools and stocked our schools, uh, with the, the supplies that they will need to, um, return.
Okay, I am asking that because I hear feedback from teachers who are buying their own equipment now. For when they go into the buildings, um, for whatever reasons, when they need to go in at this point in time. So I just want to make sure that we're. We're providing them with what they need and what we're saying that we're providing them with. And also. I think that was my question. I got the COVID fatigue. I think I may have forgotten a little bit of what I was asking, but I just want to make sure that. Oh, I know what I wanted to ask. Um, we're always talking about the spread amongst children and how they're less likely. You know, to spread it, although that could change with the next study. But the older students, there's data, you know, and we can interpret data, variety of different ways. It says that they spread it a li, a little more like adults. So as far as the high school, it would be nice to see what those plans look like for teachers. Like what they are training or the mitigate, like what teachers get when they walk in the door. Like if we could see, or you could provide it maybe on a site just to show, you know, the measures that we're taking. And that teachers are getting the adequate training to be able to operate in a brave new world.
Thank you. Anybody else? Dr. Kraft, are you raising your hand?
Well, yeah, I, I guess what I, I want to see us, um, you know, move, move ahead with this affirmation. I guess is that, that's what it is. And just, I guess from my perspective. I feel like the important thing is to convey this, the, uh, sentiment of the board. To our, our sentiment that we really do want to. You know, to get started with our in-person education and we want to. Find ways of bringing as many of our students back safely as quickly as possible. So that's how I feel about it. Uh, I do. You know, I, I don't want the board, I guess Mr. Wade said this, I, I don't think the board needs to be in the middle of all of the details of this. Um, I do trust the administration, you know, to carry this out effectively. I think we've done a wonderful job, um, you know, doing this so far and, and being prepared for this moment now. So, um, that's what I, I would just like to see us move forward with our affirmation. And expressing the sentiment of the board of where we would like to, to go now.
Thank you.
I just think that there is a confusion with what the sentiments of the board is with, since option A is actually limiting. So if we have, I would like to be more clear about what our, what our intentions are as a board. Specifically relates to five through twelve or three through twelve.
Ms. McKeever, I would like you to spend a couple minutes, if you would, and try to come up if we feel like we need to amend this slightly. If you have something, but I'd like to ask Ms. Packer, um, if she has any thoughts or, or would like to speak at all or share your thoughts. Please.
Um, so from what I've heard, option A, um, correct me if I'm wrong. Option A will bring that targeted students to, um, for all of the grades, is that correct? So that's including pre-K all the way up through high school?
Uh, option A would bring back our pre-K through two students whose families indicated that they wanted face to face. So it would bring back all of those students. And then in grades three through twelve, it would bring back targeted students.
Okay, so basically I do think option A should be approved. Because it is a step in the right direction. A lot of us would like to get back to school in-person learning. And taking this step, it will allow the administration and us, the board members to see. Kind of what protocols need to be in place to bring back the majority of students. So I do think that option A, we should go along with this.
Thank you. All right, so I'm pivoting back. At this point, you know, I would entertain, you know, an amendment or. To our affirmation to what I had read prior, Ms. McKeever, if you have something and if Dr. Atkins, that's okay with you?
Yes, please, thank you.
Okay, so I think my, my option A, you know, I love the idea of, well, first of all, my option A.
This would be McKeever A.
My, let's just, okay, so I gotta write this down. So I would want, um, starting March eighth. I would want pre-K through four back. And then maybe the following week doing Walker. And, um, and Buford. And what I would like to see there as a, again, I would like the principals to be in charge of, or, you know, the division to come up with. I don't want targeted students. I want all the students who can come and want to come to be able to come. And that can be. It doesn't have to be every single day. I like twice.
To clarify, is that the students and families who opted to come back when the survey was sent out?
That is the baseline for yes.
I mean, and that's, I mean, again, I know you and I've talked about this, we've got transportation as an issue or a consideration to this. And we also have, you know, that our planning, my understanding is that planning was based on the numbers of students in that survey. That opted to come back. So to, to, you know, to pivot and, and say, any student wants to come back, I think.
That's not what I said. That is not what I said. I said all students who would like to come back based on the, on the survey. That's the baseline.
Okay, I didn't hear the based on the survey. So, okay, that's fine.
But that's what I meant. I'm sorry. That's what I meant by as defining who's, who would come back. But, um, and I don't think it has to be, um, every day. I think if we could go back to that initial plan of the committee, basically the two days a week at Buford and Walker. Whatever the, again, and I, it doesn't need to be this.
I can't hear you. Is it me or is it?
No, I can't.
We can't hear either.
Jennifer, sometimes it helps to turn off your picture and it might help your internet if, when you're trying to talk.
Can you hold on a second? Thank you so much. Hi, okay, sorry about that. So, yeah, I just, um, so I don't want to be as specific as us, but basically.
You froze and we couldn't hear anything you said. So if you could turn off your video and repeat what you said, it would help because you froze. All we heard was say, excuse me, I need to stop for a minute. So whatever you were saying, we couldn't hear you.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. Okay, so my, um, theory, so get everybody back as soon as possi, or anybody who would like to come back. Based on the survey from the fall. Five through twelve on a regular basis. And a staggered rollout basically before spring break. And then, um, but yeah, but get pre-K through four back, um, starting March eighth. Four days a week. So it's basically expanding option A to be like the option from the fall.
So, um, Madam, Madam Chair. Motion and I'm, I'm not, and if you could just make that and.
Ron, you're freezing. Turn off your video.
I would like a clean motion and then second, and we can discuss it. I'm not sure what her motion is.
I would agree, please.
Um, can we get the, um, the PowerPoint or the options from the fall that the committee recommended? Where the February first start for the high school and. Can we, can, can we see those? Because right now we don't have any of, we don't have any of these proposals in front of us. So it kind of makes it difficult to talk about them.
Ms. McKeever, uh, we would have to, um, I would have to work with staff to pull those up to get them in front of you.
I would like to, um. I mean, Ms. McKeever, if you're comfortable making a motion to, to, you know, expand, um, or amend our Plan A. You know, to pre-K through four for starters. And then we'll see if we get a second on that. Can we start there? I mean, I feel like.
I would be delighted to make that, yes.
I mean, I'm, I mean, I feel like we're muddying things here. Um, and I know it's not, you know, no intent, but. I mean, I feel like we need a solid starting place, please.
Okay, so basically I would like to expand option A. And the first expansion I want is that pre-K through, instead of pre-K through two, we do pre-K through four. Starts on March eighth.
That's your motion?
That is my motion.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Okay, so I just want to clarify that option A then literally does tie the hands of our division. If we're not saying anything. More than targeted students. Okay, great.
I would like to call the question.
So there is no question. It wasn't, the motion failed because it didn't get a second.
Well, I meant my original, I guess. Motion that.
What is that motion?
Not allowed to make a motion, so I would dispute that you've made any motion.
Gotcha. Never mind. Thank you.
So if we have to make a motion, I thought that in January, we said that, you know, we revisit. I thought we'd already done it, but if not, then I will make a motion that we should. Staff recommendation of option A. With the condition that. If there, if it's going smoothly, that they are able to, um, add additional students that they're third and fourth grade. That they able to do that with proper notice.
I'll second that.
And I will open that up for discussion at this point. Ms. Bryson Morseberger, I'm seeing you first. Do you have any comments, please?
I, I would still just reiterate the point I made earlier that, um, I, I still think that. We should let the staff be fully vaccinated before we go back to the building.
Thank you. Mr. Bryant?
Can you repeat it? Because he was in and out with one. What was the motion?
I believe his motion, and I'll repeat it and correct me if I'm wrong, please, somebody, um, is that, um, he moved. To adopt. Plan A with a return to learn start date of March eighth and allowing some latitude. And all the principals to include grades three and four with proper notice to parents or communication to them.
And I guess my concern would be. I guess Dr. Atkins would have to go back and talk to the principals since they already have planned for what we were discussing tonight, option A.
Yeah, so, so, um, Mr. Bryant, this is, um, we're, we're in discussion now. So I understand that and, and, and she can, and the principal, the principal. The only, the only, I mean, they don't have to come back to us as a board to say, okay, now we want to try the third and fourth grade. They have the option now that if things are going well and working smoothly. The principals and like things are going smooth, they're gonna come back to us. They can give proper notes to the parents and say in two weeks or a week or whatever, we're going to be able to roll out more. And that's all that, um, that's, you know, that's the. Change that I'm adding on there. So, and that, and, and that is to, you know, to try to appease some of the, um, concerns. That some of my colleagues said, um, tonight, and, and they were very excellent points. So, um, um, thank you.
I just don't understand what we mean by running smoothly. How do we know that? And, and I just feel like we gotta, we, before, before March eighth, we. Should have a plan or could have a plan to bring third and fourth graders back. And I do not want to tie the hands of the administration by, or their, or the principals by saying if it's going smoothly. If they decide they want to have kids back starting the following. Then I would like them to have that flexibility.
Yes, I understand and smoothly is not something that you can measure. But they will know after a certain period of time after. Second grade, they have with that grade is working well and they can incorporate more students. That's what I'm saying. So, um, and, um. And so down the road, whatever, you know, um, that time period would be. Then we can, um, they, they will have that ability to say, okay, I think we can add to more students without coming back to us. So I don't think that I'm going to, you know, my motion is going to appease you or, um, Lachandra. And so, uh, that's, that's, you know, that's what, what we're here for, but it just may not work out. Nothing we can do or amendments will appease you. But, you know, we need to come up with the, something to get the ball rolling and this would do it. And I don't want to keep having staff to go back to look at options, go back and do surveys and things. We have to get the ball rolling and, and, and that's what they put us in for, to make these tough decisions. So.
And, and I don't think anybody's asking for any of that. In fact, I want more kids to be back before Mar, on March eighth. That's what I'm asking for. And I feel like we're doing more harm than good by splitting up the third and fourth graders. Those first graders and second graders and pre-K and kindergarteners are going to be going back to their homes. And exposing their families to what's happened in school. And those kids who are at, uh, who, those third and fourth graders, who by the way, are suffering dramatically. And are falling behind significantly despite what I would deem heroic efforts by our staff. That, and they desperately want to see their students. I think it would be very helpful to have, not have to qualify their return. By if it's running smoothly or if it's going well, if the principals and Dr. Atkins before March eighth decide. This is a plan we're going to do. Instead of having this nebulous third and fourth grade thing, we're going to do this. On March eighth, we're going to bring the pre-K through two back. On March sixteenth or whatever the next week is, we're going to bring the third and fourth graders back. The following week, we're going to bring this, this cohort back. I would like that to not be a barrier to that. And I feel like the qualification that you have placed on that motion is a barrier. And I would like them to be able to plan now for everybody returning in whatever fashion that is. Over the next twelve weeks.
Ms. McKeever, I, I mean, I'm a little confused. I mean, so are, are you saying that we would make this motion right now? With these specific criteria? I mean, we, you know, I, I really. I mean, I hear everything that everybody's saying, but I feel like I haven't heard anything from. The superintendent or staff that. That they aren't wanting the same thing that, that you're saying that, that we're wanting, that all of us are wanting.
Then let's actually be very specific and clear rather than putting qualifications. Because I think qualifications that Mr. Wade has placed on the motion limits them.
Okay, so what are your specifics that you want to state in a motion?
I, I would like to have a plan for returning to school beginning March eighth of. All of our students in some fashion, pre-K through four. We've talked about this. This is muddying things, remember? So I want the pre-K through four back. And I don't want to limit, I mean, our current plan. I, um, and option A limits that. And I, I want to be more expansive. That motion already died, though.
Okay. I would like to quick, not quickly, but if anybody else would like to discuss. I would like to, quick, not quickly, but if anybody else would like to discuss this. Otherwise, I really would like to call for a vote on this now. We do have presenters who have been waiting to present, so I would like to be mindful of them. Or if there's a way we can table this and continue our discussion towards the end.
No, please, let's vote. I call the question.
Okay.
We even know what we're voting on?
Mr. Wade's motion.
Why don't we have a repeat of what that is?
Um, Ma- Ma- Madam Chair, and, and Dr. Atkins, and I'm gonna repeat my motion, and please let me know if, if, if you don't understand it, or if it's not enforceable, or if you need clearer direction. My motion is that we adopt Option A. And if it allow, i- i- if, if we're able to incorporate or bring back the third and fourth students, third and fourth grade students with proper, with proper notice. And that could be, you know, a month after, it could be in April sometime, whenever the students are, whenever the principals believe that the second, and the pre-K and second graders are, are in, and things are going smoother, they're like, you know, we can bring some additional students back in. That's all I'm saying. And it may not be able to happen. Maybe they, they think that they need to, you know, need more space or whatever, but I just don't think, Dr. Atkins, do you understand what I'm saying? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Thank you.
And we had a second-
Can I just clarify, like, so what I heard from Mr. Wade was that we return using Option A with an additional caveat that with proper notice, we return the third and fourth graders.
If the principals and administration believe that they can bring them back, because the second, the pre-K through second grade is, is going smoothly.
Okay, that's a different motion.
No, no, it's not. I think that you are trying to muddy things up, dear colleague, so I, I think that it's been moved and properly second, and I think we're, I call the question, Madam, Madam Chair.
But we don't even know what the motion is, because one time he says, there's gotta, basically, the students have to, the second and pre-K through two has already started, and it's running smooth. The, the last time he said it, it didn't, he didn't say that, so I would just like to leave it up to the, to the staff to decide when like, third and fourth graders can come back with proper notice. And that doesn't necessarily mean that pre-K through two has already started.
I, I can't explain it anymore. I'm, Madam Chair, I've stated my motion several times. The superintendent understands it, and I'm, if you need further guidance or information from me, I'm, I'm prepared to offer. Thank you.
I, I'm gonna repeat it, if I may, please, because I'm a little confused. The motion I heard from you, sir, was that we adopt Plan A for a return to face-to-face, which does include pre-K through two, starting March 8th, with latitude from principals and teachers within the building to bring in third and fourth graders with proper notice, and when they feel it is safe to do so. That, those were my words, but, not to muddy it, but is that what you meant? Okay.
Perfect, thank you.
And it was seconded by who, please?
Me. I seconded.
Dr. Kraft. Madam Clerk, I would like you to take role for this, please, her vote.
It's Madam Chair. Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Ms. Bryson Morseberger?
No.
Dr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. McKeever?
Yes.
Ms. Perrier?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
And Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Dr. Atkins, quickly, if I may make a statement about this. I just want to acknowledge quickly all correspondence that we have received relating to this return to learn our face-to-face instruction. I want to acknowledge, actually more than acknowledge, all of the extremely hard work and dedication that before school hours, the home visits, the after-school hours, the hours spent on weekends that our teachers, our staff, our principals invest in preparing for students, whether face-to-face or virtual. Thank you, everyone who has worked tirelessly to ensure mitigation measures are in place. For those of you who may think this transition is easy, or will be easy, or have asked, or think that we can pivot and make this face-to-face happen tomorrow, I ask that you understand that, that it isn't just that easy, that there's a lot of time and preparation that, that is going to be needed, and support that will be needed to make this happen, even with the date. I'm asking our community to try to understand that this entire change will be trying. It will be emotional. And as much as I know our teachers are excited to be with their students, I know that with this change will come some apprehension, some fear, anxiety. Yes, it's face-to-face, but it is nowhere near a return to the normality or the normalcy of a year ago. I ask that we all continue to work together to support each other, to reach out a hand to each other, and to not, or to try not to add more onto the plates of teachers or each other as we together adapt to what this new normal will look like. It is time to get the kids back into the building. We, as a board, are committed to doing whatever we can to offer, offer necessary supports as we move to this new part of this journey. I am in support of this, but please do not underestimate that because I support this, I also, that it also doesn't mean I don't have ongoing and significant concerns and worries. I trust that we, as a division, have done what we should and can to prepare our spaces, but this is not one-sided. There is a responsibility of families and students to do your part, of us to continue to do our port, our part, and keeping us all safe and healthy. And I want to thank everybody for their time and their discussion around this. Thank you. All right. Moving forward, we have some items for discussion. And first up, we have a discussion around inclusive curriculum and social science. Dr. Atkins, would you like to?
Thank you, Ms. Torres. First, I'd like to, we have two presenters for, we have several presenters, but we'd like to start off with Dr. King, and she's going to lay a foundation for the work that has been going on with Ms. Menton and with Dr. Douglas at the Heritage Center. So, Dr. King, would you give us that foundation, and then we'll move into the other presentations?
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. This evening, I would like to give a brief update on the model policies for the treatment of transgender students in Virginia schools. It is the document that the Virginia Department of Education had to develop no later than December 31st. Thank you, Ms. Thacker. And it was mentioned last, at last month's school board meeting with the equity update. The initial implementation of the model document was dated to start today, February 4th, but it has been postponed pending Board of Education review of the public comments, which could lead to a possible adjustment to the document. An overview of what the model document states includes school board policies will be adopted prior to the beginning of the 2021-22 school year. The goal is to minimize stigma and foster an inclusive school climate for transgender and other gender non-conforming students. Additional professional learning for staff will occur, including required annual training for mental health professionals. School divisions may take an inclusive approach by incorporating educational content that is gender-affirming into the education curriculum. And research indicates that an inclusive approach leads to less hostile, a less hostile learning environment, better academic, mental health, and academic attendance outcome. At this time, I would like to invite Ms. Neely Menton. She is our Coordinator of Social Studies and World Languages, to present an update for inclusive curriculum and social science in Charlottesville City Schools.
Thank you, Dr. King. Appreciate it. Good evening, Dr. Atkins, Madam Chair, and members of the board. Thank you for your work tonight. I know it's a long night, and we appreciate your work. I'll actually be co-presenting tonight with April Brown, who's an amazing fifth-grade Virginia Studies and ELA teacher at Walker, and Rachel Caldwell, who teaches third grade at Venable. And we are going to present about our focus on anti-racist and anti-bias social studies instruction in Charlottesville City Schools. So, Ms. Thacker, if you can change the slide. These are the dual purposes of our push for anti-racist and anti-bias social studies instruction in CCS. On the student side, these are the goals that we have for every student. We'd like every student, we'd like to validate every student's identity and multiple identities, for every student to see themselves in the content, and for every student to engage in rigorous anti-racist and anti-bias material that's relevant to their lives. But we know that we can't just get those outcomes immediately. The way to achieve that is through teachers and other educators. So, on the teacher's side, if you can go back, sorry, on the teacher's side, our goal is to build teacher capacity to confront our own biases, core values, learn truthful historical narratives, and to teach in a rigorous, anti-racist and anti-bias way through something called critical inquiry that we'll get into in just a moment. You can change the slide. So, before we get into talking about the CCS changing the narrative teacher cohort, I want to take a moment to recognize the work that we've built upon. Much, much, much good work has been done before we started our CCS changing the narrative teacher cohort in CCS. So, I want to take a moment to recognize Dr. Andrea Douglas, Executive Director of the Jefferson School African-American Heritage Center, who's going to present in just a moment, and Dr. Jelaine Schmidt, who is a UVA professor. Both Dr. Douglas and Jelaine Schmidt co-created the idea for, and the implementation of the Embracing Our Narratives Teacher Institute. And that was designed to teach local educators about local African-American history. And through that experience, we really came to realize that African-American history is US history. And so I want to recognize their work and recognize that that was the impetus for our work in Charlottesville City Schools. So, thank you for that. Our work also builds upon my predecessor Annie Evans's work with the Kellogg Foundation in Virginia Humanities, who held a Changing the Narrative Conference during the summers of 2018 and 2019. And it also builds upon the work that Dr. Atkins and the African-American History Education Commission have done, and Dr. Atkins has chaired that commission. They've done a lot of work to dissect and recommend changes to the Virginia Standards of Learning in Social Sciences and the curriculum framework to the standards of learning. And I'd also like to thank my core planning team for the CCS changing the narrative cohort. And that core planning team consists of Alexis Mason, Charlene Abney, Sherry Bryant, Bria Williams, and Ben Newsbaum, who have all partnered with me to plan and facilitate our cohort. So, in CCS, we started our Changing the Narrative Teacher Cohort last year, last school year, where teachers, teachers grappled with identity and implicit bias, truthful historical narratives, and rigorous pedagogy. Many of these same teachers who participated in our cohort went on to participate in the Jefferson School Embracing Our Narratives Conference. We're running a second teacher cohort now, and we're partnering with Facing History in Ourselves and Public History experts. And I'm going to turn it over to April to describe her experiences in our cohort.
Thank you, Neely. Changing the narrative is the perfect forum to have open and honest conversations with teachers from across the district. We hear from experts, write, and talk about our own experiences and face our own identities, all to better serve our students.
Thank you, April. Okay, so one of the outcomes that I intended to have happen as a result of teachers' participation in changing the narrative teacher cohort was that we would create a new inquiry-based social studies curriculum in all grade levels, K through 12, that centers on truthful narratives, is relevant to students' lives, and causes students to grapple with rigorous content and take informed civic action. We're preparing students to be citizens in our democracy, and that's really important that they take informed civic action. We did accomplish that goal by writing, coaches and teachers and I collaborated to write our own in-house inquiries, which mostly focused on local history. We also collaborated with a group called the Virginia Inquiry Collaborative, consisting of school divisions across the state, museum and public history experts to write inquiries at different grade levels. And we took some existing inquiries from C3teachers.org and adapted them to suit our needs. So, we do have a nearly complete inquiry-based curriculum in K-12, and we have a second round of curriculum work happening this summer. And teachers and instructional coaches who will be writing curriculum this summer have been participating in professional learning through the Virginia Inquiry Collaborative throughout the year. And actually, Mr. Bryant joined us to serve on a panel to discuss school desegregation, and we are very happy to have him there and learning from him. So, thank you, Mr. Bryant, for that. And I am going to turn it over to Rachel to describe her experience learning about the inquiry design model, or IDM, and writing third-grade inquiries this summer, and working to make them virtual this year.
Thanks, Neely. Like Neely said, many teachers from our division participated in the Virginia Inquiry Collaborative this past summer. And we met with other teachers from around the state in grade-level teams. So, for example, I was on a team of other third-grade teachers, and we worked on creating an inquiry for ancient China, along with a museum partner from the Smithsonian's Freer and Sackler Galleries, who brought her expertise of the museum's artifacts that would fit with our unit. And this fall, we obviously had to shift all of that to virtual instruction, so we've been adapting the third-grade inquiries to an online format. Since many of the artifacts used in the inquiries were digitally accessible anyways, it was a pretty seamless transition to create Google Slides and interactive lessons that followed the inquiry design model. So, we've, you know, we've adjusted and adapted, and we're still implementing.
Thank you, Rachel. So, an inquiry, this is what it looks like if you change the slide. An inquiry, or an inquiry unit revolves around a compelling question and asks students to analyze primary and secondary sources in order to construct their understanding and knowledge, and formulate conclusions backed up with evidence. Each inquiry culminates in having students take informed action to impact society based upon what they learn in the inquiry. And April actually carried out this inquiry last year, and I'm going to turn it over to her to describe her experience teaching through this particular inquiry in Virginia Studies.
One of the first IDMs we completed was establishing a new nation. Did our founders and founding documents protect liberty or slavery? The topic opened a can of worms of discussion about our racist history, from the actions of our founders to the founding documents of our country. As a class, we were able to honestly synthesize and discuss quotes and documents from that period to answer each compelling question. One of the most amazing parts of my job was to hear from a parent over the summer about how they were able to have more deep and meaningful conversations about race and racial inequality because of what we did in these inquiries. Students were able to connect our past issues with what liberty means to our issues with what liberty means today. The Taking Informed Action section of the IDM involved students identifying instances when liberty is in doubt in the United States by interviewing community members about their own experiences. This was a very impactful activity, especially due to the racial inequalities that we are seeing all over the news every day. The IDMs help our students understand how much our past influences are present, and what we can do now to change our- The IDMs help our students understand how much our past influences are present and what we can do now to change our future.
April, thank you so much for describing that. And actually, I had the privilege of observing April's classroom last year when she was engaging in this inquiry with her students, and it was phenomenal. I just heard really rich discussions and I appreciated all her work around that and her leadership in her PLC team to carry out these inquiries last year and this year. So thank you, April, for that. And so if you want to go to the next slide, the next slide just shows the Taking Informed Action piece and the summative performance task. And then we'll move on to the one after this. Ms. Thacker, if you can go to the next one. These are some examples of compelling questions our students are exploring in social studies this year from K-12. And I wanted to point out the fourth grade inquiry on history versus memory. How should we decide what's worth remembering, which was an inquiry written by Christine Esposito, are one of our gifted resource teachers here in Charlottesville City Schools. And one of our teachers at Jackson Villa, Brian Christ, who's a member of our Changing the Narrative Cohort this year. His students were recently engaging in this inquiry and they were featured on the news recently. For the Taking Informed Action piece of the inquiry, his students met with Vice Mayor Sina McGill to talk about what they believe we should memorialize in Charlottesville based upon what they learned in the inquiry. So that news story is linked on the last slide if you want to check it out for yourself. So in order to set up these kinds of discussions with students, it's really imperative that we do identity work with students at the beginning of the year and throughout the year. Students must understand their own intersecting identities in order to grapple with topics that involve race, ethnicity, gender, and other identities. Our goal in CCS is not to be colorblind, but to be color brave. To be anti-racist or anti-bias requires us to recognize and affirm race and every other intersecting identity. So I'm going to turn it over to Rachel to describe her experiences planning and implementing some identity work with students.
Teachers have always spent the first few weeks of school building community and establishing trust with students. But this year, part of that work included proactive discussions of identity and laying groundwork for how to talk respectfully and inclusively about identity. Some example lessons that occurred in many of the grade levels involved discussing the power of names and how they connect you to your culture, your family, and your community. We also did an identity mapping exercise where we discussed race, nationality, religion, gender, language, hobbies, interests. Teachers modeled what it's like to respectfully and inclusively talk about these topics, which might be uncomfortable at first for students who've never had conversations like this before, especially at school. And teachers were there to guide and facilitate the conversations in a safe way. And we also discussed norms for having these brave conversations. And this was really laying the foundation for the conversations we'd be having later in the year in these inquiries and normalize speaking about identity in school.
Thank you, Rachel, so much and for all your work on the Social Studies Content Squad and doing a lot of that planning. So in order to track our progress, we are collecting student data using VDOE-developed rubrics that measure whether students are making claims and backing them up with evidence during each inquiry. Tracking student performance helps us to reflect on our own practices and ensure that the work we're doing as educators is translating to our students in the way that we intend. And at this point, the next slide's really just a link that you can check out to the news story that I was talking about with Brian Chris's class at Jackson Villa. And then we just wanted to open it up to any questions you might have.
Madam Chair, can I go? Okay, I'm just gonna go. Thank you. I just want to say that I think that the work you all are doing is amazing and I want to thank you. I know students personally in the LGBTQ community who are, who feel like they have a place when these lessons are discussed and they see themselves represented. And I also want to say that when I do virtual learning, next to where I'm working and my daughter is doing her virtual learning, I've been enjoying the lessons. And I wish, like, I hope that, you know, it spreads and kids everywhere can have access to it because the, the discussions are so engaging. They were talking about the Washington Monument and how one monument can mean, you know, freedom and liberty of one person and how it can mean oppression and slavery to someone else. And they talked about it. And my daughter said, you know, that our teacher was so nice and she let us ask all the questions and it really was. So I want to commend you because I enjoyed it and I wasn't even supposed to be in the class. So thank you all for what you're doing.
Thank you.
I definitely want to reiterate what Ms. Bryson Morrisburka said. It is delightful. And then to have the conversations after school with the kids, after hearing the the conversations that they had and then talking with them about it more, it is really so deep and relevant to their lives in ways that I hope just last generations. I just feel like the work you're doing is, is vital. So thank you so much.
And it's, it's the teachers. The teachers are doing a phenomenal job with this. And I couldn't be more proud of everybody who's putting in so much effort to make this happen.
Anybody else? Thank you. I agree with everybody.
Yeah, I want to thank you too. And I think this is so profoundly important, you know, for our kids, but also just for our entire community. I, I think it's really changing, you know, it is changing the narrative in ways that are so desperately needed. And I think the effects will extend, you know, beyond the kids to the rest of our community. And I wish that I could sit in on some of these lessons myself. I really would like to. So if there's an opportunity to, I would love to be invited to do that. But I really appreciate everything that you're doing very deeply. Thank you.
Thanks, Neely, for expanding the conversation. And inclusiveness for all of our students, I think it's important. And thank you for inviting me to be a part of that panel. I thoroughly enjoyed it. I hope the kids did it, did as well. Thanks for all you all are doing. Thanks, April.
Thanks, Mr. Bryant. We really do appreciate you being there at the panel. So thank you for sharing your experiences.
Anybody else?
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you so much. A lot of work went into all of the work, the summer work, the after-school work. And sometimes these conversations are very difficult. For varying reasons, they are difficult. But I just want to thank all of you, the big issues that we're discussing and their important issues. So thank you for all of your work. We appreciate you so much. Thanks, Ms. Brown, Ms. Caldwell. We appreciate you so much, Ms. Minton. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. And thank you for your support for all of this work. We couldn't do this without you. So thank you.
Thanks, Neely.
Thank you. Is there another part to that presentation or no?
We are finished. I think that next up is Dr. Douglas and Dr. Dickerson.
Yes, Dr. Douglas and Dr. Dickerson will present some of the work that has been going on at the Jefferson Heritage Center. Dr. Douglas?
I knew I had seen them and I was like, wait a minute.
Me too. All right. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm getting a little echo. Are you all hearing me well? Okay, I'd like to thank you all for Madam Chair and the members of the board and Dr. Atkins for inviting us to speak with you all tonight. The last time we talked really, I think, about, or came before the board was about yet another project. So I always appreciate an opportunity to come and, and tell you about the work that we have been doing. I think most of you know that bringing the local history into our curriculum has been my passion. We've been trying to get this to this space since 2011, since the Heritage Center's first open. You know, this particular program, Embracing Our Narratives, started with a conversation between myself and Annie Evans almost two, two and a half years ago in relationship to a Kellogg grant. And at the time, the idea was to create a series of resources for teachers. And after sort of thinking this through a little bit, I realized you can always give a teacher a resource. But if you don't give also some background on how to use that resource or why that resource is is better than another resource. It's difficult without having that kind of information to make real decisions in the classroom. And so Embracing Our Narratives came out of that. It also came out of the notion or the understanding that Charlottesville's African American story is equivalent to America's story. And going in, we really went in with the idea, could you teach American history from the local space? Could you also teach her American history by not centering a white narrative, but by centering a black narrative? And so those were the sort of underlying considerations going in. I was lucky enough to have my colleague, Kimely Dickerson, Dr. Dickerson, available to work with me on this project. And I owe all of our success to her. If it were not for her, I don't think we'd be sitting here tonight, to be honest. Can I get to the next slide, please? So yeah, so as I said, this was our reason for doing this. The other part of it, I want to thank Neely and her team as well because changing the narrative and embracing the narrative, we have a lot of narratives going on. There's rediscovering the narrative, so many narratives. Are really two programs that work hand in glove. Changing the narrative prepares your teachers for the conversations that we have in embracing our narratives. And we really wanted that to, to be a foreground because what we're trying to condense in just a matter of days, the amount of history that we are condensing in just a matter of days, leaves very little time for the discussion of the sort of culturally responsive pieces of how to deal with that. And so we are very appreciative of being able to know that when, by the time teachers walk into our program, they've already had some opportunity to engage with the kinds of conversations that this material elicits. So I really want to recognize that. And then before I turn it over, the last thing I want to say is that in developing the curriculum, we began by creating a advisory board of educators, of UVA, people from the Curry School, people from our local community, historians, to really help us think through how we shape these ideas. We also created a curriculum design team, which included members of my staff, again, local scholars. And we basically just hashed it through. What is it that we believe are the most important things in our local history that would move the conversation forward? That would provide teachers with the kind of information that they needed in order to talk to students who themselves are fairly politicized these days, you know? It's an interesting space that people find themselves in. So that is the armature around which we created this five-day program, which was intended originally to be an in-house program. And midstream, we had to make some shifts in, in the way we presented it. And that's why I had all kudos to Dr. Dickerson because I would not have been able to manage it all myself. So I'm going to turn it over to her so that she can talk a little bit about how the program went. And then we'll come back together afterwards and answer any kind of questions that you might have. Dr. Dickerson?
Thank you, Andrea. You are too kind. So first, I will start by talking about the Summer Institute. Last year was our inaugural Summer Institute. And as Dr. Douglas, Dr. Douglas alluded to, we initially were planning to hold this in person. We, like everyone else, had to kind of quickly switch this to a virtual setting. So you see here a photo from, from last summer. We had about 22 educators who participated. About half were from Charlottesville City Schools, including many who had gone through the Changing the Narratives cohort from last year. And we also had a good number from Almar County and a few from private schools in other surrounding counties. They were taught by university faculty who were experts in local history. And then we also brought in community voices, community experts. So these are folks who might be descendants of free or enslaved people in this area. People who personally had stories that they could share about, for example, integrating both Charlottesville and Almar County schools. So we invited folks like that to tell their own stories in addition, in addition to having an academic perspective. In terms of topics, we covered African American history from the 18th to the 20th century. So that included free and enslaved people. We talked about the Civil War to Reconstruction. We talked about the development of the Black middle class. And we ended talking about the long civil rights era. The participants also, in addition to the lectures, we had small groups discussions. We had time for individual reflection and activities where they could explore different resources that existed in the community and that we encouraged them to also integrate into their classrooms. Next slide, please. So in addition, we collected some data about the program for evaluation purposes to assess how it went, its effectiveness, and also thinking about ways that we can improve the program in the future. This is one piece of data that I wanted to share because it really struck me and us in terms of being evidence of the value of this program. So all of the participants from last year who took the survey at the end said that this professional development, this week-long series last June is more useful than other professional developments they had taken in the last year. So for us, that really highlighted the value that this program adds in terms of focusing on local history and time to think about how to integrate that into the classroom. Next slide, please. We also wanted to know how educators were impacted by participating. So I've shared two quotes here that were from those final surveys that we collected last, last June. On the left-hand side, this teacher is talking a little bit about gaining local history knowledge and then also planning to implement that into the classroom. So Embracing Our Narratives has opened my eyes to a new world of African American history in my own backyard. I will without a doubt use local narratives, stories, and examples as often as possible to educate my students about true history available to them so close to home. So really circling back to this idea of place-based history and the importance of connecting history to what exists in our own communities. And then on the right, this is a quote that really highlights the role of this program in helping teachers understand their students and begin to build relationships with them differently. This workshop will help me better connect to my Black students. By knowing local history, I as their teacher can develop more knowledge about their families and about their collective struggle. This knowledge will lead to more empathy in a natural way that isn't forced or faked. Fake. So these were two goals of, of embracing our narratives from the beginning. And this data really helped to show us that this was something that, that educators were actually walking away with so that we were really kind of meeting the goals that we set out to meet. And next slide, please. So in addition to the Summer Institute, we will be running a professional learning series at CHS this spring. We've partnered with Dr. Irisari to bring this series into the building essentially, not, we will be virtual, but we will be during the school day on Fridays during set aside professional learning time. So this will be a six-week hybrid program. We'll have three live sessions that will be facilitated by local history experts. And then we'll have three asynchronous video sessions using video, video sessions from last year's summer program. So so far, we have 25 educators who have signed up all at CHS. We've got teachers, we have administrators, also counselors from a variety of content areas. So we have social studies, we have English, special education, math, science. So we've really got a diverse group and we're excited to kick this program off starting February 19. And next slide, please. In terms of the next steps for embracing our narratives, we will hold the Second Summer Institute this we will hold the second Summer Institute this year, June 21st to the 25th. The structure will be fairly similar to last year. We're anticipating having a virtual session again this year, a virtual workshop. So far, we have over 20 educators registered. Again, the majority of them are from Almar County Public Schools and from Charlottesville City Schools. We will also be building a web-based resource bank. So this was the initial idea behind embracing our narratives. And so we're circling back around to really complete this resource bank as a space for teachers to be able to pull from as they integrate these lessons and learnings into their classrooms and into the curriculum. We want to further integrate local African American history into the division-wide curriculum. And lastly, want to expand the community of educators who participate and participated in embracing our narratives. So really excited this year to not only have the Summer Institute upcoming, but also to be doing this partnership with CHS kind of within the space of the school day. So the goal here is really to expand the number of educators who are familiar with and are learning about local African American history and embedding it into their classrooms. So just want to, in there, thank you for inviting us again, and we will open it up for questions.
Wow.
And I just want to, just before we actually do that, I just want to add one point because I want you to sort of understand that by the time we finish this summer, we will have trained 75 teachers, which puts us way further ahead than we had anticipated. And you know, the resource bank that we're working on, the pandemic closed the libraries. And a historian without a library is like a man without a leg. You just sort of walk around in circles, you know? So that's our goal for the summer as well. So it just struck me just now that we have really sort of tripled our goal almost in a year, seeing what Kim just described for you.
Yeah, let me read my question. Yeah, Dr. Douglas, Dr. Dickerson, wow, thank you so much. I mean, it's so exciting. I sit here and I'm like, I want to be a teacher. I want to be, I want to be in those classes. So it's just incredible and I'm just so eternally grateful to you both and to everybody for, you know, who's worked behind the scenes to make this happen. Because I know it's, you know, you all have been working on it and talking about it. And Dr. Douglas, I believe, hearing some of your initial conversations about this years ago and to just see it now come to fruition. And thank you for all of the work that you're doing, both of you. Board members, anybody else have questions or comments for either of them?
I just wanted to say thank you for the work you all are doing. I love the work and I'm so happy you all are here in this community, doing this work here. It's appreciated. And if there's anything else we can do to support your efforts, please let us know.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I concur. I just wanted to, Andrea, this is something you've been talking about. It seemed like further than 2011 has been something you've been wanting to do for a long time. So and to have 75 teachers trained, that's phenomenal. So what, in my mind, what that would do is that they're teaching other students and then they will be able to learn and have the appreciation and love, the history of here as they're walking around, you know, Tenth and Page or Fightfield or wherever they are in the community. So that's, that's one of those things you just can't measure. That's teaching love for themselves and their community, where they came from. And so this is just phenomenal. I'm glad that, you know, we could participate in that and this and anything that we can do to assist this, just let us know.
The other thing that I wanted to also add to our efforts because, you know, you've got to work these things on both sides. So for the last few years, we've been running a Trailblazers program. And we were just awarded, we were included in a $5 million grant that from the Mellon Foundation that the University of Virginia has gotten. And so what we're hoping to do through Trailblazers is to train your students to learn this history and to continue to act as tour guides. The money that we got from Mellon will allow us to pay them so that they see this as a job. So I think that, you know, approaching our approach from both directions really will create some sort of synergy that then allows us to think through very clearly, Dr. Atkins knows, about what the changes in curriculum will look like. And Charlottesville is already ahead of the game for so many reasons, certainly based on the presentation we heard earlier. So I just wanted to add that to it, too. That's also our summer work. So we'll be pretty busy this summer as well.
So I'd like to say thank you also, Dr. Douglas and Dr. Dickerson, for all of the work that you've been doing. And Dr. Douglas, this has been a dream of yours for many years. And you've worked at it diligently for so many summers and so many falls, trying to get teachers and trying to get the curriculum written. Knowing the local history is a vital part of understanding who you are in that community. And I love you coming at it from both ends, with the adults and with the young people in our community. And it's just going to spread to start and teach our African American students and all of our students to have our African American students to hear about the contributions that their relatives made and their community members made to make our community what it is and the struggles that they have gone through in order to be where we are today and the struggles that they've gone through and the lack of progress that has been made. That's, all of that's the realities of our community and where we are. So just thank you for being so transparent with them. Thank you for teaching them. Thank you for teaching all of us. Vitally important that we all be a part of this. We appreciate you so much.
Well, like I say, you know, without Neely's help, I think, again, we're working together in a really proactive way. And I think at the end of the day, three years, four years from now, we'll have enough data between the two initiatives to really see how, you know, how well we're doing in that regard. So that's also really important to us as well, to really track it and create the data that's necessary to do more and think more broadly about it.
I think one of the measures of success will be when we move from having African American history in a month to it being threaded throughout every conversation about history and who we are in that history. That's certainly a mark of success. Thank you all.
And last thing is your teachers should be applauded as well.
Yes.
They have, they were very enthusiastic about the program. We didn't include how it's been used in the classrooms, but even under difficult circumstances, we know, we heard from people that the teachers have been using the material and continue to use the material. So I think you all should be pleased with the work that your teachers have done as well.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Are we moving on now? I believe the next item is school calendar, 2021, 2022.
Thank you, Ms. Torres. We have Dr. Odie, who is going to give you an update on our draft school calendar. And tonight, we heard at least one comment and we've received several other comments on the school calendar. So, Dr. Odie?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Atkins, good evening. Tonight, I do present to you a 2021, 2022 draft school calendar. Thank you so much for showing that for us, Leslie. This calendar was developed through collaboration with Albemarle County Public Schools. We met with their team on several occasions to work to align our school division's calendars. After our conversations with them, we worked to create this draft before you tonight. You may notice that this calendar is very similar to the 2019, 2020 calendar regarding start and end dates, student holidays and breaks and professional learning days. This calendar was posted for comment from the community, as you heard earlier. And as Dr. Atkins just referenced, we haven't received an abundance of feedback, but we have received some and most of what we did receive was favorable. This calendar is informational for you and we will continue discussion with Albemarle County as needed and continue to listen to the community. At this time, I'll take questions.
Dr. Odie, can you, can you explain why January 3rd is included in a day off, please?
Yes, January 1st, New Year's is following on a weekend. It falls on Saturday, January 1st. And it being a federal holiday, we need to give the next day off, January 3rd. Because we're already off for the winter break before that, so we do need to add on.
Gotcha, thank you.
But we don't have off for other federal holidays, so I'm not sure I understand.
If it falls, I think if the day or the holiday actually falls on a weekend.
Yes. Yes.
Then you have to be credited that day off somewhere.
The same as we're off for Thanksgiving. We're off for New Year's. So right as Ms. Torres said, it does fall on the Saturday. So we want to give that next work day as a holiday for staff and students.
Does it have, does it have to be on the 3rd? Could you give them an extra day, like the Friday before, the 17th? And add a day on that end or not? Or does it need to be consecutive or near the actual holiday date?
And I don't think that would matter. One of the things that we try to do is align with, as we're planning with Albemarle, to have our calendars as closely aligned as possible. And that was just a part of the discussion and where they landed.
And you'll notice if you do look at their calendar, they will have the 3rd as a holiday as well.
I don't know about you guys, but I just, so having three Mondays off in January does really not make any sense. And then not having a day off until the first Friday in March makes no sense. Is there any way to better split up that slog there between? Well, and in fact, it's not even a day off for teachers on the 24th. So it's like, basically, the teachers don't have like a day off or three-day weekend until, well, there's just very few days there between January and April.
And we did have the discussion about the three Mondays. It's not ideal, but you'll notice that the end of the first nine weeks, excuse me, the end of that nine weeks is there on January 21st. And so the Monday is the teacher work day. So the teachers can work on their grades and report cards. We absolutely acknowledge that it's not ideal, but because we knew that we needed to give that holiday for New Year's and of course, we want to, we will be off for Martin Luther King Junior Day, that work day just fell right behind the end of the nine weeks.
And there are, there are teachers on this committee when you guys are looking at it?
Yes, yes, we have teachers, when we met, teachers from Charlottesville as well as teachers from Albemarle County and principals as well.
And parents, too.
And parents, yes.
Oh, I'm a former school calendar parent. It gets a little heated there.
And we've, yeah, we've come together several times and had some of these same discussions.
So, Madam Chair and staff, was there any discussion from the county and the cities, you know, on this that to make, you know, to add additional time either during the day, start school earlier, let them, you know, extend the year and things like that? What was that discussion like?
Are you talking, you're speaking of adding time because of COVID, adding time to the end of the year?
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, for the next couple of years, you know, it's going to be some catching up to do, I would imagine.
We discussed the reason that we're presenting to you now rather than December, when it typically is presented, is because we wanted to wait and discuss what we were going to do. We know that we're going to be looking at school, summer school opportunities. But we did discuss the possibility of extending the year, but determined that we were going to have summer school instead and possibly have it a longer summer school.
If, if the governor were to make some recommendation or mandate, I mean, is that then you would bring it back with those changes or how does that work?
As far as.
Yeah, it would depend on what those recommendations are. And it would, it just depends on what those recommendations are, Ms. Torres, whether we would be extending this school year's calendar or making significant changes to the FY22 calendar.
Gotcha, thank you.
I feel like we have to answer a lot of questions before we can approve the calendar for next year. And while, like, if this were business as usual, my only concern would be like the 3rd of January, honestly. But because I don't think we can return to business as usual next academic year, I think we need to be a lot more creative. And I feel like this discussion around the calendar, while I understand it, it's just normal business. That's what we do. I feel like we got to really think outside the box here and stop talking about the calendar for next year until we have some answers to the questions of what we're going to do.
And this is information only tonight, correct?
That is correct, Madam Chair.
Any other questions from board members at this point? Okay, thank you, Dr. Odie.
Thank you.
Next, we have a presentation of the 2021, 2022 budget, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Ms. Torres. What we'd like to do now is present to you our recommended funding request for the FY21, 22 budget. We'll start off with Ms. Powell and then I will go over the specific items that we are recommending to include in the budget.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins, Madam Chair, members of the board. Wait for Leslie to get it loaded. You can go ahead to the next, thank you. So this is just a reminder that the work we do on budget is all under the Code of Virginia, as referenced here. The superintendent is incumbent on the superintendent each year to prepare an estimate of the funds needed to support the operations of the school division for the coming year. And so it's a needs-based budget and it needs to be balanced. Next slide, please. You've seen this slide before, but this is something our Finance Director Renee Hoover has started to do, which is look at our budget and apportion it out, showing how it aligns with the strategic plan and the major categories of growing relationships, supported and supportive staff, and diverse, inclusive, and rigorous learning experiences. Next slide. Now that was a slide you've seen before. I did, we did put in a few new slides for you this evening in response to some of the discussions we've had at our previous meetings. We wanted to give additional information in areas that where people had shown interest. And so this slide shows how our positions are allocated across three categories. When you think about our positions, you can think of school-based positions, division instructional positions, and then division administration positions. And so what you see is the current allocation of the positions across these three categories. 91% of our positions are school-based. 4% or 31.6 are division instructional positions, which are positions that focus on curriculum and staff development. And it includes all of our, any instructional or mental wellness positions that serve multiple schools. So we can't assign them to one specific school. And then the division administration positions, which are 5% of the positions, are 43.5. Those positions cover finance operations, human resources, technology, and then our senior leadership team. Next slide, Leslie. Another topic that has come up in discussion at our, actually with our joint session with council, was our Charlottesville's per pupil expenditure. So we wanted to provide some additional information on that topic. Basically, when you look at per pupil expenditure, at the very bottom of the slide, you can see where this information comes from as far as comparative information. The contributing factors are, number one, economies of scale. So smaller and mid-sized divisions simply have lower economies of scale. So smaller and mid-sized divisions have, simply have lower economies of scale. In other words, there's a smaller number of students to spread the cost of the core functions that all school divisions have to cover. And Charlottesville is what would be considered a mid-sized school division. When you look at the membership of all the different school divisions across the Commonwealth, I believe the average is over 9,000 and the median or midpoint is around 3,000 something, and we're slightly above that. So I'm wearing that, I would, you know, we would be considered mid-sized. Also, cities, for whatever reasons, the local per pupil expenditure averages 3% higher than counties and averages 4% higher overall. Regional factors, cost of living and cost to compete factors are certainly a big factor. Albemarle, like us, is in the top 10 for local expenditure per pupil. And so there's a cost to compete factor, both in central Virginia as well as northern Virginia. And then last, but definitely not least, our community values. What, what does the community want to see from the school division? And some of the drivers here to consider are smaller neighborhood schools and our unique upper elementary school, that middle years configuration we have that's fairly unique. The depth and breadth of our programs, again, in relation to the number of students we're serving, economies of scale comes into play here as well, as well as the core functions. Small class sizes is a big factor. And then the smaller neighborhood schools got listed twice, sorry. But anyway, that's just what drives per pupil expense. And so at the bottom there, you'll see that for fiscal year 2019, which is the most recent year where the comparative report is published, there's always a good year or so lag in getting this table 15 updated on the superintendent's annual report, which is published by the VDOE. But we were eighth in Virginia for overall per pupil expenditure and sixth for local. And those numbers are there at the bottom of the slide. And the pictures you see here are representative of our breadth of programming, our orchestra, our gifted program, STEM, Avid, and these are just the ones that I had enough room to put pictures on the slide for. So all programs that the community values and we are very, you know, pleased to be able to offer. Next slide, please, Leslie. So, something that we talk about frequently during the budget process is state funding and the significant dependency, or rather the burden that's placed on localities throughout Virginia to support education. State funding is based on a formula that is ironically and erroneously called the standards of quality or otherwise known as the SOQ. And what you see here are the core positions funded through the SOQ, principals, assistant principals, librarians, and so forth. So, so just to take principals as an, well, let's look at, let's look at assistant principals. For assistant principals, the state SOQ based on our enrollment would allow us a total of, it provides funding towards 1.55. We have 15 assistant principals. We, so we're above the SOQ by 13.45. What the state gives us towards those salaries after our local composite index of ability to pay is applied is a little over $36,000 and it costs us over 1.1 million to fund our assistant principal positions. So we are significantly above the, what the state funding is that is provided for these positions. And you see that in all of these categories. Teachers, of course, is the big one. We're, you know, over 19 million above what the SOQ provides. And these are the, just those which you might consider core positions. There's also support positions to consider. And the SOQ put in this, the support cap was put into the SOQ in 2010 during the Great Recession. And, you know, like these SOQ components above, the funding for support staff, it wasn't in line with reality before the support cap. The SOQ was not in line with reality before the support cap was put into the formula. The gap only made the, the cap only made the gap much worse. And so, for example, for the positions listed to the right, technology, psychologists, social workers, finance, custodians, nurses, human resources, our current cost is 4.5 million. Currently, the SOQ provides a little over a million dollars to support the, what they call the efficient and cost-effective operation and maintenance of the school division. And if you'd like to learn more about the SOQ and this whole situation with the support cap, there are links at the bottom of the page there. You could, if you Google, those are the exact titles also of the articles. There are some really good articles that explain what's happened with state funding for education in Virginia. Next slide, Leslie. So, in order to receive state SOQ funds and incentive and lottery funds, all of the state funding, every locality has to meet or exceed what's called required local effort for the SOQ portion of the funding formula, and then something called required local match to receive the lottery and incentive funds. And so, of course, they all have acronyms. This is RLE and RLM. And most years, all localities exceed RLE and RLM. And the key point on this slide is how far above and beyond localities have to go on average to provide the type of educational program that the community, you know, wants to have. So for required local effort, on average, for fiscal year 20, localities exceeded the minimum required local effort by over 82%. And required local match was exceeded on average by almost 71%. And so Charlottesville is among the 30 school divisions in Virginia that exceed the state RLE and RLM requirements by 100, over 100%. So we're in that kind of pale blue piece of the pie there. Next slide, Leslie. So, that's just a lot of background information, but those are topics that have been touched on in previous work sessions. So we wanted to take just a moment to dig a little deeper and provide more detail in each of those areas. Our, bringing things back to the here and now, our priorities for developing the FY22 budget are to recruit and retain highly qualified teachers and staff, maintain the continuity of high-quality instructional programs, and apply a lens of equity in all of the funding considerations as we work through this budget process. So the next portion of the presentation gets into the line item changes that are recommended. Leslie, you can advance, I think, two more slides, yep. And so at this point, I'll turn it back over to Dr. Atkins to talk about the different components of the proposed budget changes.
Sorry, Kim, it took me a minute. Our power went out, so Dr. Atkins' computer's restarting.
I saw, would she like, if you're able to cast, would she like for me to start the? And I hope all those acronyms and charts didn't bore people, but it seemed, there seemed to be some interest from our prior session, so I like to. Renee and I like to geek out on those things from time to time, so.
He's almost there.
Okay, great.
Kim, quickly, I just, you know, I know we've talked about the SOQs and how, you know, we exceed the SOQs, but seeing that, seeing those numbers is just astounding.
Yes.
So I really appreciate seeing that chart. I mean, I feel like we should share that chart out with our state folks.
Part of my, part of my agenda is always to help anyone who wants to advocate for better funding for K-12, because it affects, it affects all of our communities across the state.
Yeah, I mean, that's just incredible, that really 1.55 assistant principals, you know.
You'll find those links at the bottom of that SOQ page interesting if you have time to look at them. Those are supplemental, they're, I wish I could remember who wrote those stories, but they're, they're very good. They're from a third party that has done a lot of analysis.
Yeah, thank you for including that.
I apologize, Ms. Torres, my power went off. Everything went down for a while, but I'm on the laptop, so we can continue.
Please do, thank you.
Thank you. So I'd like to go over now the recommended changes, the additional supports and programs that we'd like to add and the salary actions. We'd like to recommend a 2% salary increase for our teachers, support staff, administrative staff, and administrative staff. And for clarification purposes, when we speak of administrative staff, that includes everyone in the school division except the superintendent. We'd also like to recommend a nurse pay scale alignment with the regional market. We've taken a look at the regional market and we'd like to make adjustments to our nurse scale to become more competitive in the market and the region and be able to attract the great staff that we know that we're accustomed to having in our division. We also would recommend that head custodian pay be adjusted to also align with the regional market. The teacher salary increase action would be $760,507. And then you can see the other line items and the cost, bringing the total salary actions to $1,334,581. There are a few non-discretionary action items. Two would be in the contract, insurance contract area, the general liability property insurance contract, and then the workers' compensation contract. We also would recommend increasing the pupil transportation city contract and bringing the total of the contract, the contracts, let me add in the city contract for maintenance. We would recommend increasing that also, 226,404,000. And a note to that, that the city contract increase takes into consideration the mitigation strategies that have been put in, the, the RNOs, air purifiers, and other mitigation that has been added to our facilities. Bringing the total non-discretionary contract cost to $386,669. Next page. Now, on the, the school-based program supports and improvement. We'll start with internet access. I'm so pleased to say to our community and to our board that during the time that we've had virtual learning, that our technology department has done a remarkable job responding to the needs of our students and to our families and to our staff, our teachers. And we have about 99.9% saturation in internet access. All of our students do have access and do have devices. We would recommend that a continuation of internet access, even when we return face-to-face in the fall, and that is our plan, that we would be face-to-face in the fall. But our students continue to have access to internet services before school, after school, on the weekends, in their homes. And we've included a line item for that. We'd like to continue to use Zoom, so remote learning instruction tool. We'd like to continue with that. We have a communication tool platform called Remind, and we would like to continue with that also. Nusella is a literacy contact platform that has been used pretty extensively in grades seven through 12. We would like to continue that. Social workers for grades P, pre-K through 4 and LMA. We're recommending that we add 6.5 positions in the social worker slash counselor slash psychology area intervention area, in order to respond to some of the social emotional needs of our students and to our staff once we return face-to-face. We do believe that there will be significant need, and we want to have the staff in place that can respond to that need. We also want to position ourselves that as we start to develop how we will respond to safety and security in our schools, that we have the staff in place in order to provide the supports that will be necessary to put in a strong program in our school as we transition beyond having SROs in our buildings. We would recommend starting to continue with adding instructional assistants to our second grade classroom. So we would add one instructional assistant to each second grade classroom. We also recommend an assistant, an additional assistant principal at Charlottesville High School. They currently have three. Now, this would give them one assistant principal per grade level. A reading specialist at Greenbrier, they currently have one reading specialist, and the need has increased at Greenbrier, so we would recommend adding an additional reading specialist. We have a program called structured teaching autism resource program. That's our Stars program. We would recommend, the program has been successful at Walker. We'd recommend adding a teacher at Walker and a teacher at Beaufort for the continuation of those services. Math specialists for Charlottesville High School. To respond not only to the students who may need support in order to complete Algebra I, but also for students who are, our non-traditional students who are going into our advanced classes, our advanced placement math classes, or any of our dual enrollment or any, any type of honors program in mathematics. We provide the support that they need to be successful. We'd recommend adding a fine arts teacher at Beaufort. Our arts programs continue to grow and expand, and there's a demand for those programs. So a teacher at Beaufort. Also, we have entered into a wonderful relationship with Virginia State University, and they will be offering dual enrollment college-level courses for students. And it would be a program called Students Training to be Teachers and Reaching Success at Charlottesville High School. Next week, we will be having a signing where parents and students will be signing an agreement to enter into the program with Virginia State. Once completing the high school portion of the program, students will then be offered admission to Virginia State, and it will be covered by grant funding for their tuition. We recommend a .5 literacy specialist program for Lugo McGinnis. We also will recommend that at several lead teacher stipends for grades K through 6, there's much of this work that's already going on, but we would add a stipend to acknowledge the work that our teachers are already doing. Also, a lead teacher stipend for our pre-K teachers, for our English language learners, English as a Second Language teachers. Also, lead teacher stipend for special education teachers. And then with our math specialists, we would add additional contract days. We would add 10 contract days for them to continue with the, some of the professional learning work that they are doing, teaching, providing services and supports to our classroom teachers. We'd also recommend the same type of addition for contract addition for our reading specialists, an additional 10 days. Content squads, there are many content squads that have been writing lesson plans, developing curricula, finding wonderful resources to support our classroom teachers. So we would recommend to continue with the content squads into the school year. Currently, we have about 40 staff members. Many of them are our teachers who are participating in the alignment of the standards with the taught material. Substitute teachers and teachers who cover classes when there's an absent, we would recommend an honorarium be included in the budget for that work. Our K through 12 bookrooms, we would recommend adding some additional resources to restock those bookrooms. We would also recommend to restock our K through 12 science materials and supplies. We've been sending those home to our students during COVID and restocking those areas and making sure that we have enough for classroom lessons and also for in-home lessons. Musical instruments, maintenance and repairs. We saw a surge in the number of students in orchestra and band at Walker, and that continues to move into Beaufort. And with the inclusion of many more students and many brown and black students in orchestra and band, starting at Walker, there are more instruments that we have in our schools, which therefore would require naturally more maintenance and repairs. We are in a new contract with the athletic trainer that services Charlottesville High School, and that contract, there's an increase in the cost of that contract. So bringing the school-based. So bringing the school-based program supports and improvement a total to $1,854,119 for those programs. Thank you. School operations mitigation supplies. We have earmarked $100,000 to continue. Ms. Bryson Moersberger talked about making sure that we have supplies at the ready for our teachers and our staff in the building, that it has always been our intent. So we we'd certainly like to earmark some of the COVID dollars to continue with those supplies. Reductions, our enrollment, I think Cam, Ms. Powell, may have gone over some of this, but our enrollment did decline this year. We anticipate of regaining about 65% of that enrollment. So we have factored that in. So we would recommend a reduction in professional staff, four of the professional staff and a reduction of one in support staff and instructional assistant, bringing the total reductions to 372,874. And then looking at our revenues, the grand total of the net expenses would be $3,302,495. When we move to the revenue side of the house, the state revenue that we anticipate receiving would be 32,781. The cares $1,842,466, and the cares $2, a total of $4,481,993,481,993. Bringing a total of revenue to $5,324,459. With the total changes from FY21 to FY22 at $5,357,240.
And Leslie, if you want to pause there, if you, it's not all apparent on this one screen, but basically, if you look at the previous screen of the of that 5.3 million in cares money, you see that we're going to use, we're proposing to use 3.3 million, 269,714 in this FY22 budget proposal, which would leave to over, little over 2 point million to still carry forward to help address the FY23 budget. So.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Powell. And we'd also note that our request to the city would be level funding, no increase in the funding. But I, Ms. Powell mentioned, and I will mention also, this budget is a needs-based budget. However, it is built on cares $2. Some cares one, and and the bulk of these changes are being built on cares $2, meaning that it's one-time funding. So beyond FY22, as we go into FY23, we would have to start working our way out of the reliance on the one-time dollars. Next slide.
Leslie, yeah, if you want to go to the summary section, please, yep, next steps.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Powell.
Would you like for me to wrap it up here, Dr. Atkins?
Yes.
So the, this is just a snapshot of the summary of of what all those change, proposed changes would look like when you break it down to our general fund and our special revenues fund. And so you see here that the FY20 budget recommendations that we're working with right now would increase the general fund by 3.3 million. The special revenues fund would hold that $2,54,745 in cares money that we would be holding over. We have to have a place to hold that over. You know, for FY23, so that's where that money would sit in special revenue. And then the total change is the 5.3 million. Next slide, Leslie. So Dr. Atkins just touched on this, but it's such a critical point. It definitely merits its own slide. You know, this budget proposal is really, it hinges on an acknowledgement that the city is in a, is in a challenging revenue position right now. And it's, perhaps it's equally uncertain or even more uncertain than it is challenging. I think the uncertainty of it all is is one of the biggest problems. So and acknowledging all of that, we did try to, we're trying to use our cares money in a way that we address the most pressing needs of students while at the same time building or allowing for a ramp or a runway for the city revenue to recover and come alongside of us. And so when you look at what we're, you know, what's being proposed to do with with what's what we call one-time money. It's not money that's going to, you know, come in continuously from tax dollars or other revenue streams. It's important to understand that historically, the city has increased the appropriation to the schools between 1.5 and 3.8 million a year. So an average annual increase of 2.3 million over the past five years or so, in what we would call normal times, between 2015 and and 2020. And the city's funding is the key. You know, back to the early part of the presentation, talking about the SOQ and all the the different programs that contribute to our per pupil expense. The the local support is is really foundational and key. So the this budget proposal that the school board's been working with, Dr. Atkins and staff, we've all been wrestling with this idea of there's an urgency to address a lot of needs, certainly desire to maintain all these valued programs, but but also giving some some ramp or runway for the city's revenue picture to become more clear and and time to recover. And I think the next slide is just the next steps. So there's a budget work session on February the ninth. That's the next work session. And then the school board approval of the proposed budget is slated for February 18th meeting. And then on March 1st, that's when the school board presents the budget proposal that they adopt to the city council.
Right, thank you, Ms. Powell. Ms. Torres will be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins and Ms. Powell. Any questions from the school board?
I have a few questions.
Yes.
Um, the first question is, the, we got, we've been asked twice about the raises and if they cover people making over 200,000. Is that a, is it, does it, or does it? Can we get some clarity on that? Because it's been asked.
I think, I think Dr. Atkins addressed that.
So, no?
Correct.
Okay, just checking. And then, is there any way to? I know that the Cultivate Charlottesville people have been contacting us about their requests. Is there any way to have some presentation or clarity or some discussion around that before we close out the budget with our final request?
Ms. Bryson Moersberger, yes, there are several meetings that have been planned right now for clarification on what that request actually included.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just follow up on that point? Will we have that information for our work session on Tuesday in time for that meeting?
Yes, Dr. Craft, we will.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I I recall discussing additional raises or additional, because what we're only doing is one step. And our, my understanding is we didn't do a step last year. And so I thought we had discussed on, in January at our work session, kind of bringing back numbers related to that. Will that happen at the work session?
It will, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Another thing I wanted to kind of clarify, maybe for the work session purposes, is that the, just kind of related to the calendar, is I I feel like, again, we're kind of continuing to do the same thing, even though things are not the same. And I respectfully, with the contract the teachers sign and teacher hours and our staff hours might be expanded next year to try to like, whatever it is that we're going to try to do, I I feel like we need to kind of think about that for the next school year. And maybe we talk about that more at our work session, especially after we have a little bit more information from the state. But I also feel like we're flying blind a little bit, trying to do a budget for next year. And then we still have a lot of questions to answer.
I agree there, there. We're not quite sure just yet what the govern, governor plans to make an announcement tomorrow. I don't know if he will be including information about his recommendations for the impact on either this school year or next school year. But we'll know tomorrow. I think that announcement is around 11 o'clock tomorrow.
Anybody else, Mr. Bryant, Mr. Wade? Ms. Perrier? Can't see everyone.
No, I I don't have any questions at this time. If I do, I will send them to you. And you can address them to Dr. Atkins, or I can send them to both of you, to both of you simultaneously. But at this point, I don't.
All right, Dr. Craft, do you have anything else?
No, I mean, just a comment that I I I do feel like we are building in a lot of extra supports for, you know, given, given, I think, what we're going to be confronted when the students do come back and when we actually have a chance to see the in the impact of the pandemic, you know, on where the where our students are. And so I do feel good about that. You know, that we both mental health, social and emotional support, but also extra, you know, sort of a ladder of extra instructional support. So I I'm I'm pleased about that. I feel good about that.
Thank you. And I'm sure we will have ample opportunity on Tuesday to continue to ask questions if they do arise in the meantime. If not, I think we can move on to our next item, which is the 2021 School Board Member Committee assignments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. King has taken a look at committee assignments, made some adjustments to those assignments, and we'd like to present those to you now. And the adjustments is based on any feedback that we may have received from board members.
And I think I, anything that that may have been adjusted. I mean, I had touched base with different board members. I do have one question, and I had posed this at the V S B A conference this week that I attended to the lawyer, the V S B A lawyer. And and I think she did try to call me back, and I missed that phone call. But I wasn't sure, and I had asked during her presentation whether or not the board chair needed to be one of the people assigned to the disciplinary committees. Or if that was, if there was leeway in that. And I I did not, like I said, I missed her call and was was not able to get back to her before today. So I'm not sure if anybody has any knowledge about that.
Torres, just as a matter of procedure, it it may, since the chair would be a part of the appeal committee along with the rest of the board, and you would be conducting the meeting, it, there may be not anything legally against you serving, but procedurally, we might want to consider that since you will be guiding the meeting with the appeal, and you will have all of the knowledge ahead of time if you're on the committee.
Right, and so that was one change. Again, I apologize that I didn't follow up prior to that. And how is that listed there? Can you put that back up, Leslie, please? So there were.
You're an alternate.
Right, so there are three listed there. Is that correct on that committee?
That's correct.
All right. So would Ms. Perrier, Dr. Craft, or Ms. McKeever, would one of you mind switching with me?
Can I just?
I'm I'm happy, I'm happy to be an alternate, Lisa, if that will address your concerns. And if you find out from a legal perspective that it needs to go in the direction that Dr. Atkins mentioned, then we'll make the switch. So go right ahead.
Okay. Thank you.
My understanding is that we are, I've literally never had to be on, participate in a committee meeting and that all of us are on it because we, they come up so quick and it's hard to schedule. So it's it's alternate in name only. It's basically who's available at the time.
Okay, all right. I just was checking, and I knew that was, like I said, it was a question I had posed during that conference, but they didn't answer it at the time, so.
But just, so just make the switch, Lisa, and list me as an alternate. If the, if a disciplinary meeting is called, whoever can be there will be there, and we can just keep it moving.
Okay, great, thank you, Ms. Perrier. So if we can make that change, is everybody okay with all of the other assignments?
Are you asking for us to move this?
Unless there's further discussion, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'll I'll make a motion to pass the the school board committees as changed or altered by you becoming not an alternate on the student disciplinary committee and Leah, Ms. Perrier, becoming an alternate on the disciplinary committee.
Second.
Thank you, any further discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, could you take a vote, please?
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
It's Bryson Moersberger.
Yes.
Dr. Craft?
Yes.
Ms. McKeever?
Yes.
Ms. Perrier?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Wayne?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right, I think we are now to our our second opportunity for comments from members of the community. Again, if you raise your hand or in the chat or have indicated that you would like to make comment, please state your name, your address, and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Madam Chair, I have Beth Icke to to make a comment.
Ms. Icke?
Thank you. Um, two things, thank you for the clarification I requested. That is helpful and appreciated. And in general, thank you to everyone for working so hard. I will say, this was a frustrating meeting to listen to because I I sense that patience is frayed, and we're all frustrated with the hand fates have dealt us. But to hear a school board member refuse to explain his position, especially one who's running for city council, was disappointing when asked for clarification. I think we should all try and exercise a little patience. And I would hope that greater patience and greater listening would be in order as we move forward. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Anybody else, Mr. Como?
I do have another hand raised, and a user is listed as Angel Fero.
Hey, y'all, it's me again, Richard Fero, 825 Prospect Avenue. Um, thanks again for having me. First, it was great to hear from Dr. Douglas and Dr. Dickerson, what they're rolling out, sounds really exciting, really excited to hear what's cooking there. Um, the next comment I want to make was, before the year began, American Pediatrics warned us about the likely adverse effects of virtual learning, that not what that would have on the mental health of children, especially elementary children. And then we, and then today, we heard from three doctors attesting to how that possibility has become a reality in their practice. Um, so I may have this wrong, but I believe Ms. Musburger said something to the effects, we don't know how long the children will suffer from mental health issues due to the virtual education. To me, those comments sounded like you want to see how far we could push the children. I'm confident that's not what you meant. But if you could clarify what you were saying in response to the comments the doctors made, that would be helpful. Um, and lastly, it'd be, it'd also be helpful if someone could confirm if the vote that took place tonight is the official vote that is going to bring pre-K to second grade back to in-person learning, March 8th. And, um, guys, just echoing previous comments. it's tough. This is a tough time. Y'all are in a tough spot. No one signed up for this. And really appreciate what y'all are doing and how y'all are serving the community. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fero.
I do not see any chat messages to participate in public comment, or do I do see any hands? I'll again remind anybody who's on the phone, they can press star nine, and that will raise their hand. I will turn it to you, Madam Chair, for the amount of additional time you'd like to give for public comment here.
Thank you. We'll give us a few seconds here. Going close to 30 here. Anybody else?
Right now, we still have zero hands raised, and we have zero chat requests for public comment.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm going to close public comment then. Thank you for everybody who did take the time to offer comments and emails. And now I'd like to move on to our superintendent's comments, please. Dr. Atkins?
Thank you, Ms. Torres, and thank you to all of the board members for our discussion tonight. Ms. Becker, we have one slide that we want to put up. Wonderful. We'd like to recommend one of our board members, Ms. Leah Perrier. We'd like to congratulate you, Ms. Perrier, for of the 2021 Martin Luther King Jr. Community Award. Thank you for all of your work and your tireless efforts to engage the community and to respond to the needs of our community members, regardless of age of those community members, whether it's our youngest citizen or our most seasoned citizen. Your work is much appreciated and is evidenced by this award. So congratulations, Ms. Perrier.
Thank you very much, Dr. Atkins, and everyone who has called, texted, emailed. And I think there's some people on this call who are going to remain nameless that knew about this but did not spill the beans. So for those of you that know how to keep a secret, I know who you are, and I'm still here. So remember that, okay? Yes, look at you just smiling. Some of you are giving yourselves away. But thank you. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve the Charlottesville City School Division. And it just means more to me than any of you around this table will ever know. And thank you so much for allowing me to be a part of this tremendous organization.
Thank you, Ms. Perrier. And then we'd like to recognize our VIP winners for this week. Dr. Odie?
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. We love celebrating our great teachers and staff. And so the VIP program is a perfect opportunity to do just that. Before you, you see four of our staff members who have been nominated by their peers. Kristen Edwards, fifth grade, English Language Arts and Virginia Studies teacher at Walker. Sarah Hathaway, first grade teacher at Greenbrier. Ms. Kay, Elena Kay, an ESL teacher at Walker, and Matt Torrio, Sped teacher at C H S.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Odie.
We have a few more, Dr. Atkins.
All right, keep going.
Kelly Walters, P E teacher at Johnson. Erica Trent, sixth grade, Social Studies teacher at Walker. And Gracie Hendry, a fourth grade teacher at Greenbrier. A little bit more. Here, we have no image, but we have Desiree Connor, third grade teacher at Greenbrier. Angela Corpus, art teacher at Greenbrier. Cindy Nelson, fifth grade, English Language Arts and Virginia Studies at Walker. Jillian Smith, special education teacher at Walker. And I believe we have one. Oh, was that it? That was all? Okay, I thought we had one more. So we are hoping that we will continue to have additional nominations from our staff so that we can continue to recognize excellent teaching during this virtual environment. Thank you, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Dr. Odie. It's so nice to see those smiling faces up there. And, you know, our teachers continue to smile, and they meet every challenge that we put before them. So thank you so much, and congratulations to all of our award winners. Ms. Torres, we're looking forward to March 8, opening our schools at a minimum with our pre-K through second grade students, and then targeted students in grades three through 12 as we work with staff and look at our capacity. And we will be increasing those numbers as quickly as we possibly can. And we will send out adequate notice to our families and to our staff prior to increasing beyond the Model A. But we would be looking forward to continuing the progress of bringing our students back into the building. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. And next, Dr. King, do we have a work session wrap up? Was there anything on that list?
There were, there are not anything on the list. As board members were asking questions, Dr. Atkins or staff answered. However, if there's a question that you feel like I should have written down and I didn't, please let me know.
Can I add one, a request or a follow-up? At the next board meeting in March, can we get an update on our community COVID numbers? Just to see where we are and where we are in the surge and where we are locally with our case numbers.
Chairman Bryson Morseburger, we have Beth Baptist on if you'd like an update. I think she is, she has those numbers before her if you'd like an update tonight.
We've already voted, and so we can look it up. I just wanted to add it for the next time, just to, you know, so we can all know where we are in the community.
Great. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Do you think we are going to have board member comments?
I'm sorry. I didn't see that on the agenda.
It's right before superintendent comments.
I flipped the page too soon. Sorry.
No worries.
Sure, absolutely. We can go through a series of comments from the board. And I also do want to offer an opportunity, although I had sent her a message, Ms. Packer, if she would like to offer anything, she doesn't have to, but I wanted to acknowledge her and thank her for being here. Again, we value you and the time that you've vested in hanging in here through these long meetings. So thank you very much. So let's start with you if you'd like to say something, and if not, please, please know that we are all very grateful for you.
I do believe that this is my last meeting as a student representative. So I wanted to thank you guys for this opportunity. It was a great experience.
Thank you. Thank you again. All right, Mr. Wade, I see you right now. Are you ready? No comments? Okay. Ms. McKeever?
Hey, thank you so much. I just wanted to kind of, some of the things that I had discussed with you, I just wanted to make sure that we talked, that I wanted to follow up on in the future, if Dr. King doesn't mind adding these to the list. One is just seeing the foundation article in the newspaper. I wanted to make sure that we, as a board, also discussed creating a foundation as a division, creating a foundation. I think it's critical, especially in light of reconfiguration and Cultivate Charlesville's request that we find ways to leverage private funding and support schools through our own foundation. I also wanted to mention, we used to in the past have lunch with the city council every other month. And I know Zoom is painful, but I think it would be very helpful to continue those conversations with council, and I think they have a lot of questions, and I think we get a lot of questions. And I think, for example, we have no idea what the revenue outlook looks like. Might be helpful to, when considering our budget, to consider what the revenue is coming in from the city. So I would just love to have additional, more frequent conversations with city council generally. I think, well, last time we had a meeting with the city council, we talked about reconfiguration briefly, but I definitely think we need to have an update on the contract and where we are with that. I'm not sure that anything's going to happen unless we keep asking the question. So I think we need to ask, keep asking the question. I want to say thank you and congratulations to Leah for all of her advocacy and for her award. Well deserved there. And we'd already discussed, but I definitely look forward to hearing the outcome of discussions between our staff and Cultivate Charlesville staff about what it is that they are recommending and how we can pursue mutual, mutually, you know, goals that we both agree on. And thank you very much. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. McKeever. Ms. Bryson Morseburger?
Thank you. I had just one comment, but I will add an additional one, just to clarify, to follow up to the comments that were made. My comments about the effects in children was about the long-term effects of COVID-19. So I just wanted to clarify so that there was no misunderstanding. And just to say, it's really easy to misinterpret or to, I don't know, not extend grace. So I just want to make sure everyone's taking the time to be patient and to hear what everyone is saying and not necessarily assuming that, you know, that would, just assuming instead of, you know, extending some grace. So just to clarify, my earlier comment was that we know there's just now emerging research about the long-term effects of COVID-19 on children. And then my second comment was to say thank you to everyone who had any part in putting on the clinic at the Performing Arts Center for the school staff, and that it was a lot of work, and everyone there was volunteering, and everyone went above and beyond, and I want to say thank you. And I want to say a special thank you to Dr. Baptiste because she was up at 10:00 PM the day on Friday night, still signing people up, still filling up slots to get as many people in and out. So I just wanted to say a big thank you to her because those vaccines are saving people's lives. So we appreciate all the work that you do, and thank you.
I agree. Let's see. Dr. Kraft?
Okay, just really quickly, I wanted to mention, this is a time of year when normally some of us would go to Washington to lobby our legislators there regarding federal funding for education. And of course, we didn't go this year, but it was held virtually. And I was able to attend a meeting with Senators Kane and Warner this past Monday. And, you know, it was great. I mean, we're so lucky to have them, and I think they're both real advocates for education. And, you know, in terms of hopefully getting more federal funding, Senator Warner is just totally committed to broadband infrastructure. He really wants to do that, and also requesting that some of our federal testing requirements get waived for this year so that they don't interfere with some of what we're trying to do with our, with our students and helping them in the ways that they need help and forming our own assessments, you know, to find out where they are and how they're learning. And then I want to second Lashandra's thank yous about the vaccination clinic. I mean, it was so wonderful to have the school division really take everybody in their arms and say, we're gonna, we're gonna make this happen for you. We're gonna organize it and make it happen because it's been a very chaotic system, you know, all over the country. And there's a lot of anxiety about getting vaccinated. So I think your efforts were, you know, were a game changer and greatly appreciated. So thank you all very much. That's it.
Thank you, Dr. Kraft. Ms. Perrier?
Okay, so it's February, and it will be our first, I tell you, pandemic is giving us first. Isn't it nice to have a first? So we are going to have our first virtual Grace Tinsley Bash. It is on Friday, February 19. Dr. Atkins, I will send the information to you or to Leslie in order that it get to the appropriate place. It's only 30 minutes. From 7:00 to 7:30, you'll see a brief video of Grace and a brief slideshow of all of the recipients that have received this scholarship. For those of you that don't know Grace Tinsley, she was a force. She was very motivated for education. She is a retired school nurse with the city schools. She hired Anne Sandridge, so she used to sit in the chair where Anne is. And we've given out lots and lots and lots of scholarships. Our students are doing well. Our monies are growing. When we initially started, we gave money for the first and second year. We are anticipating that moving forward, we will be able to continue those scholarships, at least through the third year. The money has grown so that it is now housed at C A C F. That's right. We had to invest. I'm so excited. And it's just a really, really fun activity. It's only 30 minutes. And we're asking you to watch the little video, and there will be information on the screen about how you can donate. And all of your monies go directly to the students. Our administrative costs are called volunteerism. And so we do this gratefully, gracefully, gratefully, all of the things you can possibly think of to someone that meant a lot to our community and meant a lot to the students in the community. And so we want to make sure that we don't let this go by just because of pandemic. So from 7:00 to 7:30 on the 19th of February is when the event will be held. And as I said earlier, I will make sure that I zap it to you, Dr. Atkins, and you can get it to the appropriate person. I can think of a bajillion places this should go, but I know you'll know exactly where to send it. Thank you so much.
Ms. Perrier, I have one question.
Yes.
When you said slideshow, I was wondering if we are going to get a preview of the electric slide?
No, we're just gonna slide, we're gonna just slide of the students. It's gonna be of the students, yes. You will not get to see Mr. Wade do his famous thing. And Jennifer and I will just sit back and do like this as we watch Mr. Wade.
Just checking. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I did not mean to miss anybody, but I feel like I did. Mr. Bryant, did I catch you?
Just gonna say a few words remarks.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Baptist, for coordinating all of the coordinating for all of us to get the vaccine. I thank Dr. Atkins and I got the word on the same day. Thank you for all of your hard work for coordinating all of that. Again, a shout out.
It was a group effort, Mr. Bryant. I wasn't the only one.
You and your, you and your group. I want to make sure I include everybody, be inclusive. Also, a shout out to all the principals and my fellow school counselors. Congratulations. And have a happy week, Council Administrative Week. And also to my fellow board members, it was a really robust conversation tonight. We could agree to disagree, and at the end of the day, we're all working toward that one goal, and that's getting these kids back in school. Parents, hang in there. Better days are coming. So having said that, Ms. P, congratulations. So having said that, Ms. P, congratulations on your M O K award. It's so richly deserved, and you worked very hard. Congratulations. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Yes, I will reiterate a lot of those, or feel you all shared a lot of sentiments that I have. I do, again, want to extend my congratulations to you, Ms. Purrier, again. Also, I know, Dr. Baptist and team, and a lot of people, Dr. Atkins, and a lot of people who are working behind the scenes and coordinating efforts with the Blue Ridge Health District, you know, up until this point, and going forward to take care of all of our staff. And I just want to express my ongoing gratitude for all of that, and for, you know, the time spent with that. And again, Dr. Baptist, I know, and you and I were communicating very late, and I know you were entering registrants, doing hand registrations for people last weekend, so thank you again. And, you know, have heard how you went above and beyond, as I think everybody does on our team, you know, for people who weren't comfortable, or who may have been nervous to get that vaccine, and just, you know, again, reaching out that hand to make sure that everybody was okay. So thank you. So appreciate, and I'm sure, like so many of us, this is not what, you know, we signed up for, and you have just stepped right into this role of doing so many wonderful things and taking on this whole COVID thing, so thank you so much.
Thank you. And I offered to give shots to people, but no one took me up on it.
Oh, darn.
Well, you didn't offer to me, I wouldn't let you do mine.
No, you wouldn't.
Anyway, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. So, and thank you, everybody. And again, just to review upcoming meetings, which were listed, but again, this Tuesday, just in a few days, we will be meeting on February 9th, and that is a Charlottesville City School Board Budget Work Session via Zoom, and that starts at 4 o'clock. And then February 18th is another board meeting, where the budget will be presented to the school board from the superintendent. And then March 1st is when we would make our request to City Council. So thank you for showing that, and I think that, I don't think I forgot anything. So thank you, Ms. McKeever, for getting me back on track. And with that, I would like to adjourn this meeting, please. So thank you, everybody.
Good night.